Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our July 2th Board of Education meeting. We are glad you are here. To begin, I would like to remind you of a couple of things. I would like to share a few reminders. Please keep the aisles clear during our meeting to allow members of the school system and the Sheriff's Department to be able to move about. Also, except for when honoring the flag, our opening prayer, and when participating in the call to the audience, please remain seated during our meeting. We hope to have a productive and efficient meeting, and your help is greatly appreciated. Ms. Bulley, would you please call the roll?
Good afternoon. Pete Wildabor.
Present.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Josie Barnhart.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Stephanie Crable.
Hugh McManus.
Present.
And Stephanie Walker.
Here.
Thank you for being here, board members. We also welcome our new attorneys. Welcome, gentlemen. We are going to continue with the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Is there any additions or discussion? Ms. Walker?
Yes, please. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Yes, please. I would suggest that we add the insurance renewal proposal. I recommend your new business or old business?
I'd say new business.
Older new business.
I guess since we haven't talked about it this year, it would be new?
New business?
Okay.
All right, hold on. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's take it one by one. All in favor of adding discussion of the insurance renewal? Please, oh, is there any further discussion? No. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, that passes five to, everybody's to my right today, my goodness gracious, that makes it easy.
You just looked down here.
Five, five to one, okay? Other? Ms. Bradford.
I have emailed you, and you both, you all have this life skills training, this one day emergency casualty care course that I took. I'd like to add that and have your vote. According to policy, we can't just submit those requests for reimbursement in, it has to be voted on by the board.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have first and second, any discussion? Ms. Walker?
Do we need to vote on that? I mean, is that something?
We do, because that way she gets picked.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, because it's not an approved, it's not approved person.
New business?
New business, yeah.
New business, okay.
So if we could add that? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, Ms. Walker?
Yes, please. I would like to move that pre-K presentation. I believe Ms. Miles said it's only going to be a few minutes, and it's way down there. And I've had a look at it, and it looks like it's really about recognizing staff members. So I would love to be able to put it up on the agenda, kind of either under recognitions or just after.
Is that E?
It is. It is, uh, D. New business, D.
Okay, so maybe we could add it under recognition as letter C. Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, Dr. Faust, did you have one you wanted to move also?
Yes, the literacy. We can do that under recognitions.
Okay, literacy?
Which one is it? Literacy, I'll see. C?
New business, C.
New business, C. We would make that letter D under recognition. Is there, well, we have to have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move that under recognition.
Okay, we have first and a second. All, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, we'll move that on to D. With all those changes, we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. That was Ms. Walker. First and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, that passes again, five zero. We move on to, let me read all this so we have it all out. We will have the, we'll have the Reverend Clifford Barnett, pastor of the Warner Temple AME Zion Church, will be providing our invocation remotely. The New Hanover County Arts Education Supervisor Christina Facen will perform the National Anthem. Oh, that's exciting. And we've asked Ms. Mason to please lead us in our pledge when we get to that point. So at this point, if I'm correct, we are going to begin with our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear God, our heavenly Father, tonight we invite your presence in this special school board meeting. You are well aware of the issues on the agenda tonight. Many voices have been lifted with passion, sincerity, and great concern for the safety of our students, teachers, parents, administrators, staff, and of course, those who work and volunteer in our school system. Dear God, grant each board member tonight wisdom that only comes from you. Wisdom to hear clearly the deliberations that take place tonight. We pray, God, for each board member to hear clearly from you as they make their decisions. God, we pray that you will grant them the wisdom to do what is best for all that are under their care. And dear God, we thank you for the privilege to serve you in this, in this way. And at the end of the day, may you be pleased with the work that we have done tonight. May we get a good night's rest from our efforts. And God would you bless all and each of us as you keep us in the holiness of your hand. We pray. Amen.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the lands of the free and the home of the brave?
And now, Ms. Mason, would you lead us in the pledge?
A pledge, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, that was phenomenal. Thank you very much. Ms. Facen, I just got to tell you, that was phenomenal. Thank you so much. Thank you. That was awesome. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. Do I hear such a motion? I will make the motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor approving the minutes as provided, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes five zero. Our next is, and again, we have, please note that we have amended the agenda, so we will have additional recognitions. But we'll start out with our recognitions, please.
All right, good evening. With it being a holiday week, we may not have everyone who's being recognized in attendance tonight, but we still want to celebrate them. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing two very fine teams on their monumental seasons. The Eugene Ashley Screaming Eagles Girls Soccer Team and the Ashley Baseball Team were both conference champions in their 2023-24 seasons. The soccer team ended their season with an incredible record of 23 wins, one tie, and just two losses. And the baseball team had an impressive 26-6 season and made their first appearance at a state championship game in 17 years. And while we know that you wish these final games would have had a different outcome, we are celebrating tonight how far you did get, and that you left nothing on the field, and that you were in the arena in every way, with your head, with your heart, and with your team. You represented not just your schools, but your community, with grit and with a belief in yourself that defied seeds and brackets. You put us on the map for all the right reasons. You made your community proud. And we are proud of you for your perseverance and perspective. As Ashley Senior Maggie Repke put it, "None of this would have been possible without everyone on the field and the bench." I'm so lucky to be part of this team. It's something so special. Don't we love that? Because it's not just the people on the field, but the people on the bench who also make good things happen. So congratulations to both of these teams and their coaches on your extraordinary seasons. So first, we'd like to welcome the soccer team, if anyone is here.
And if I could ask all the board members to join me, please, for this? Please.
Anyone from the soccer team? No? All right. And to the boys' baseball team and their coaches. Come on up. Congrats. Thank you. All right, next, we have two staff members who are recognized in the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce's 40 Under 40. These awards honor individuals under the age of 40, but who's counting, who exemplify exceptional leadership, innovation, and service in our region. Quote, "These outstanding individuals demonstrate remarkable talent, innovation, and leadership, setting high standards for excellence and community engagement in our region," said Natalie English, president and CEO of the Chamber. She continued, "Their professional achievements are complemented by their passion for giving back and driving positive change in our community, which I find to be genuinely inspiring. They are not just the leaders of tomorrow, they are already the leaders of today." So first, we have Rakia Lloyd, an EC teacher at New Hanover High School. We'll let her come on up and have to hear my words in front of everyone. Ms. Lloyd is a New Hanover High School alumna who has since returned to teach at her alma mater, but not before earning a Bachelor of Science, a Master's in Psychology, and a Master's in Special Education. Her principal, Philip Sutton, said Ms. Lloyd is a champion for the students she serves. She is their safe haven at times of crisis. I don't like to cry. During lunchtime, her room is full of students who need a place with someone they can trust. She is maximizing every moment of her time with students to allow them to be heard, to listen, to counsel, and to guide. Her patience knows no bounds for students who need it the most. And one of her students shared these words. "After my mother died, Ms. Lloyd stayed on me and made sure I did my work so that I could graduate. If it wasn't for her, I wouldn't have made it." So congratulations, Ms. Lloyd, for this. Yeah. Once it starts, it's hard to stop, so sorry. Our second 40 Under 40 recipient is Kim Clark, principal of Trask Middle School. Kim is, in a word, a dynamo. She not only knows the name of every single student at Trask, but she knows enough about them and their lives and their passions to make a connection every time she sees them. Like, hey, Stephanie, how did that basketball game go yesterday? Ms. Clark does the same thing for her staff. She empowers her educators and gives them the autonomy to do their work to the best of their ability. And she is, in the words of a former PTA president, "The most nonjudgmental person you will ever meet. She lets you do the job, and she accepts you for who you are. And if you have shortcomings, you can tell her, and she'll help you to overcome them." It's hard to think of a better trait in a leader. So congratulations, Ms. Clark, for this recognition. Finally, we have athletes who competed in the North Carolina Special Olympics Summer Games and students who are part of the Special Olympics North Carolina Unified Youth Leadership Experience. The motto of the Special Olympics is a favorite of mine. "Let me win," it says, "but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt." It takes bravery to be in the arena, to be vulnerable, to put your best effort forth in front of a crowd not knowing how you will fare. And tonight, we're celebrating students who are brave in their attempt and who truly made New Hanover County Schools proud. So first, we'll recognize our Special Olympics Summer Games athletes. Daphne Manier of Laney High School medaled in the 25-yard and 50-yard freestyle swim. Uh, Daphne Manier, here she is. Orion Short of Laney High School medaled in bowling. Orion, are you here at the scene? Evan Maddox of the, yeah, of the TPYA program. Evan medaled in bowling. And then we have Austin Reeves of Laney High School who medaled in bowling. Austin, are you here at the scene? All right. And next, we'll celebrate the students who participated in the Special Olympics North Carolina Unified Youth Leadership Experience. So unified programs bring together students with and without disabilities to foster inclusivity, respect, and understanding in our schools. Seven NHCS students were selected from applicants across the state to participate in the Unified Youth Leadership Experience during the Summer Olympics Games. They volunteered at sporting events, they attended workshops, and they met with the CEO of Special Olympics North Carolina. But perhaps most importantly, they demonstrated true leadership, which is about bringing people together, breaking down barriers, and championing the values of diversity and inclusion. When we create a more accepting and supportive environment for all students, everyone wins. Congratulations to our Youth Leadership Experience participants, and thank you for your commitment to inclusion and sportsmanship for all. So I'm going to read all the names, and please hold your applause, and we'll get everybody who's in attendance tonight up here. So we have Keandre Marshall of TPYA, Lauren Carver of TPYA, Rebecca Quinn of TPYA, Maya Roseborough of Isaac Bear, Lily Hawk of Murray Middle School, and Kenzie Lieber of Hogard
Good evening. I'm a special guest star tonight for the recognitions. It's with great pride we highlight our communications and outreach team. Each year, the National School Public Relations Association honors individuals and teams whose efforts and expertise made a positive and lasting impact on school public relations. Their annual Digital Media Excellence Awards contest celebrates outstanding work in various forms of education, communication, and marketing. Honors include awards of excellence, awards of merit, and honorable mention. Our director of communication, who you just saw a moment ago, Christina Beam, earned six awards in total, including five for writing excellence and one for video. Come on up, Christina. Chase Fulton and Kevin Hubbard, our broadcast production coordinators, received a combined total of seven awards, four for photography and three for video, two at the highest level. And last but not least, our district webmaster, Anita Baggy, received recognition for her outstanding work on the New Hanover County Schools Parents Bill of Rights webpage. Congratulations, and thank you for setting the standard for the field. The next is just announcements for the principals. So you can stay or go. It's the best time of the year. We have some new faces and some faces you may recognize, but we want to announce some of our new principals for the upcoming 2024-2025 school year. So if we can have Mr. Burke Kilpatrick come on down. Burke, you may recognize the principal of Bellamy. You can now say hello to the principal at Masonboro. Want to give us any words of wisdom? Quick words of wisdom?
Thank you guys so much. I've had a great nine years at Bellamy, and I'm looking forward for many more years at Masonboro, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, shifting her position from the principal of J.C. Rowe to the principal at Holly Shelter Middle School is Kim Morrissey.
I sat here three years ago and said thank you so much for the opportunity, so same thing again, I hope to continue to make the county proud.
Now, a new face, a new face for us as a principal. He was a science teacher at Williston Middle School. He's been a science coordinator in Winston-Salem and the assistant principal at Hogard High School, Bobby Garcia, the principal of Alderman Elementary.
Thanks for the opportunity and must soar like eagles.
Next, in the HR department, our new Title IX investigator is Frances Murphy. Frances Murphy was a principal in New York and has been with us for the last two years.
I appreciate the opportunity and to continue to work with Dr. Barnes is a real pleasure. It's really been the highlight of my career. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, okay. And next, but not least, Jill Larson, are you here? There you are. Jill Larson is the new principal of J.C. Rowe.
I'm happy to be here and continue my almost 20-year career in New Hanover County Schools as the new principal of J.C. Rowe, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will have a couple more for you next month, and that'll fill us right up. Thank you.
Thank you. We will continue now with more good news. The 23-24 district-wide pre-K data presentation is up at this time. Here she comes. Yeah, we moved you up, so that's why.
Good evening, community and board members. I'm Shannon Smiles, the Director of Early Childhood Education. And so this agenda item is a shout-out to our preschool teachers and teachers assistants for the amazing data that they produced this year. We exceeded or met expectations of our New Hanover County Schools strategic goal in all six learning domains for kindergarten readiness. So we are excited to, a big shout-out of that, so. Do we want to go through the slides, or how would you like to do this?
Sure.
So, you know, basically, if you keep sliding, please, and just to give you a snapshot of the data, that's amazing. Six learning domains are social, emotional, physical, language, cognitive, literacy, and mathematics, which is in alignment with your ELI, which is kindergarten readiness assessment within the first 60 days of school. So then the data explains for itself on each slide under each domain. So I was involved with a statewide discussion, and out of the 12 districts, we were top two with this data. So that was amazing stuff. So we wanted to shout that out to you, just so you realize we're bigger than that. And we do three checkpoints a year, beginning of the year, middle, and end of the year. And as you can see, we've exceeded or met growth in all areas. Moving forward, we're going to continue to support our teachers, continue to excel. We have lots of opportunities coming up for professional development for our administrators to get them ready for early learning as well. So I'm here for any questions or...
Board members, any questions?
Just a huge shout-out to our teachers and teacher assistants. Amazing.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Yeah, go pre-K. Yeah. Go pre-K.
And we have one more. Dr. Barnes?
Three more.
Oh, three more.
I'd like to have a quick deal. I apologize.
I knew that I'd miss one. I talked right to their face and said, "I'm so glad you're here tonight." Okay, since we now have an opening at Bellamy Elementary, I'd like to recognize Jennifer Ross for the new Principal of Bellamy Elementary.
Thank you for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to continue our blue ribbon school of excellence path.
I went back there and she said, "Is there something you need to tell me?" All right. Next up, Sunset Park's new Principal is Chrissy Allen. Chrissy Allen comes forth from Eaton Elementary.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm excited to serve the students and the families of Sunset Park, so.
And last and certainly not least, the new Principal at Snipes Elementary is Stephanie
Thank you all for the opportunity. I look forward to continuing my years at Snipes Academy and helping our stars continue to shine. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Sutton, I believe you are up for the literacy update.
It's my pleasure to announce to the board officially now that we have received the early literacy grant from the endowment. The total amount of that grant is $8,740,856. And so I just wanted to share that information with you guys as a celebration. And do we need to vote on acceptance? So I don't know if we do that here. Can we do that in this part of the agenda?
I make a motion that we accept the eight million...
$8.7 million grant.
$8.7 million.
Second. Have a question.
Any discussion, oh, question, Ms. Walker?
Attached to that was the pre-K classroom. That was, is that part of it, or did it all get approved?
Yes, so that grant included two pre-K teachers and two pre-K teacher assistants were part of that grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to accept the $8.7 million. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. The pass is 5-0. Thank you. Moving right along. And unfortunately, I do not see a name next to, but we have our teacher voice now. I'm looking forward to our teacher voice. Here we go. All right, come on down. Thank you for being here. And I'm sorry, I don't have your name. Oh, Wendy, yes, I do. Look again. Mr. Stanek.
Yep.
Hey, sir, how are you? Thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me. So thank y'all for having me here today to share a couple of things that I've been able to accomplish since moving to Wilmington and becoming part of the New Hanover County Schools team in August of 2021. I'd like to start by saying the support and faith that the leadership team at Holly Shelter Middle and the Emerging Leaders has had in all my ideas is a big part of why I've been able to accomplish so many great things. The first thing that I'd like to share with you is the Surf Rider Student Club that I was able to set up at Holly Shelter. Creating this opportunity for our students to get back to our community and become stewards of the ocean was one of the first things that I did in the fall of 2021, and it led to several other opportunities for me to grow as an individual and an educator. Our Surf Rider Student Club is part of a network of around 150 student clubs around the nation that focus on the development and implementation of environmental stewardship projects at schools and in local communities. We work closely with our local Cape Fear Chapter of Surf Rider, and the projects that the students participate in range from beach cleanups and campus reduction, or plastic reduction projects, to building awareness on issues impacting our ocean. Being part of the Holly Shelter Middle School Surf Rider Student Club teaches our students to develop awareness of issues affecting our waterways and coastlines, construct collaborative solutions to ocean issues important to them, learn grassroots organizing skills, and building confidence as a leader, hone communication skills that move others to action, and most importantly, make a difference at their school and in their community. Establishing the Holly Shelter Middle School Surf Club led to the creation of my nonprofit organization, Share the Stoke. The initial idea for Share the Stoke began in February of 2022, when I was invited to be part of the leadership team, invited to be part of a leadership team for New Hanover County Schools called Emerging Leaders. I was tasked with figuring out a way to lead in my school, the community, or the school district. I immediately knew that I wanted to do something for the Wilmington community that involved surfing. Surfing always kept me on the right track and surrounded me with positive influences, so paying this opportunity forward to the youth of Wilmington became my goal. Over the next 16 months, I worked to set this passion project in motion. By partnering with the Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern North Carolina, IndoJax Surf School, and Point Break Restaurant, I was able to set up four free surfing opportunities for the underserved youth of Wilmington, North Carolina. Our first event was on June 30th, 2023. Our second was on July 19th, 2023. Our third was on August 9th, 2023, and our fourth was on September 9th, 2023. Transportation from downtown Wilmington to Access 10 in Wrightsville Beach was provided by the Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern North Carolina since we worked with and will continue to work with their children in the 17, or 7 to 17 age range. In addition to volunteer staff, surf instructors were provided by IndoJax Surf School to ensure that there was one instructor available for every two children. Food for each event was catered by Point Break Restaurant for free. Share the Stoke is a metaphorical bridge that connects the youth of downtown Wilmington to Southeastern North Carolina's robust surfing community. We use the stoke of wave riding to empower children, which helps them realize their strengths can flourish and that they can survive inevitable setbacks. You can follow all of our work on Instagram at sharethestoke.nc. The final thing that I would like to share with you this afternoon is National History Day. NHD is a year-long academic program focused on historical research, interpretation, and creative expression for 6th through 12th grade students. While participating in NHD, students become writers, filmmakers, web designers, and artists as they create unique contemporary expressions of history. The experience culminates in a series of contests at the regional, state levels, and an annual national competition at the University of Maryland in June. A national evaluation of NHD found that students who participate in the program perform better on high-stake tests, are better writers, more confident and capable researchers, and have more, a more mature perspective on current events and civic engagement than their peers. Participants always also show a greater ability to collaborate with peers, manage their time, and persevere. All skills important for students whether they are on the college track or plan to go directly into the workforce after graduation. I piloted the National History Day program at Holly Shelter this past school year, and we experienced a great deal of success. I had two students that volunteered to participate and work after school every Wednesday. They created an exhibit on the 1898 Kew and Masquerade that occurred in Wilmington. They placed first at the district-level competition, state-level competition, and were even selected by the State Coordinator for National History Day to represent our state and display in the Smithsonian National Museum of American History. At the national level, they were recognized as one of the top 10 finalists in the nation and received a medal from the National Park Service for creating an outstanding entry. Once again, once again, thank you for having me here today. I look forward to continuing all of these projects and continuing to grow as an educator.
Stay there for one sec. Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Comments, questions, Ms. Walker?
I'll just say how great that is. I mean, I don't know what else to say. I think it's impressive what you've done, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing to help our students. I just want to say that.
Yes, thank you. We had a, actually missed our second surf event with Boys and Girls Club today. My fiance ran it, but we have one more on August 8th. If y'all would check it out, it's Access 10, Mallard Street in Wrightsville Beach, and that's August 8th from 3 to 5, so come check it out, it's awesome.
Do you think you could send us an email? I would love, I mean, I just got to get it in our calendar. Is there a way we can get that sent to us so we can put it in our calendar?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Always good to hear some positive things going on in our school systems. At this point, we will carry on with the, our superintendent's report. Dr. Faust?
This week, of course, is Fourth of July holiday. We hope our students, staff, and community have a wonderful week celebrating with friends and family. We have a lot of good news to share as we close out another school year. We wrapped up our graduation season with ceremonies for Mosley, Laney, Ashley, Hogard, and New Hanover High Schools. Our summer graduation will take place August 8th at 6:00 PM at Snipes Academy. Congratulations to all of our Class of 2024 graduates. Our summer learning programs are taking place now. We are proud of all of these students for putting in the extra work to find success. Last month, I presented at North Carolina School Board Association Summer Leadership Conference along with the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce and two of our board members. We shared about our Career Leadership and Development Academy. This program is unique in the state, and we are happy to get a talk, or get to talk about it with the school leaders across the state of North Carolina. I also was asked to present at the New Hanover County Poverty Reduction Task Force. The task force is made up of community leaders who look at the causes and solutions for poverty. We asked, they asked me to share about how we are serving students in poverty with educational opportunities. These leaders were excited to hear our academic growth across all areas in the school system. Our turnaround task force met for a year-end review meeting. We are grateful to the community and business leaders who were a part of this effort this year. We provided solutions and accountability as we worked together to turn around our low-performing schools. Our summer meal program is providing free nutritious meals at sites around New Hanover County. Any child age 18 and under can eat lunch at these sites Monday through Friday. Some sites will open, will be open through August 9th. The full schedule is posted on our district website. Thank you to our child nutrition staff for making this possible for local families. Next week, our school and district leaders will attend our annual leadership retreat. The theme this year is reimagine. We're looking forward to learning from each other, sharing ideas for the new school year, and finding innovative ways to serve our staff and students. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Next, we have the chairman's report. Good evening. My report will be brief. We were encouraged at the end of the year testing data and understand that that is only a portion of the full education our students receive. We again congratulate all our graduates and wish them the very best in their future endeavors, whether that takes them into college, county college, trade school, military, or into the workforce. So best of luck to each and every one of you. We are excited about the literacy grant that we just heard about, that the school system has received. The budget was passed with the understanding that we will continue to look at ways to find more funding and to help our students and our staff. So our recent mention is the board did not reach out repeatedly to try and meet with the county commissioners, and our board clerk does have written documentation that we did. And I personally did call the county commission chair and remind him of that. And lastly, we wish all our students and our staff a wonderful and safe summer. Enjoy the time away and have a wonderful Fourth of July. Thank you very much. At this point, we will start with our call to the audience, Ms. Mason.
Thank you for being here and participating in a summer month. We're going to start off with Samuel Saunders.
Thank you. My name is Samuel Saunders. My children's education is very important to me. I rarely miss an invitation to visit class. I'm also a member of the Policy Council, introduced to me by the administration at Dorothy B. Johnson. On this council, I've attended meetings throughout the school year, reviewing school policies and budgets, for example. We were told to have governing rights equal to even you school board members, which brings me to why I'm here today. I've been notified that pre-K in New Hanover County has lost substantial amount of funding, and the so-called Policy Council will cease to exist on July 31st. The worst part is the loss of 17 classrooms and over 240 students that will be affected. I'm sure there's an additional untold number of eligible children that may not even have a chance for pre-K. I stand before you with my family, which represents more than 1% of those affected children. With this limited funding for pre-K, I'm forced to make serious decisions to balance their education and our livelihood. It hurts to imagine what other families in my situation are going through right now. There should be no expense spared for early childhood education. You don't need me to tell you to educate them sooner or pay for it later. Educating these children now will make everyone's life better for the future. Many issues that plague society can be nipped in the bud. I will conclude and ask you to please find more funding for New Hanover County pre-K. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for bringing your little helpers, too. They're so cute. Thank you for bringing your helpers, too. They're adorable.
Good evening. It's been 14 months since we've gotten an update from the Federal Governor Individual with Disability Education Act sanctions. The majority of the school board must be uncomfortable hearing about this significant disproportionality of out-of-school suspension for Black special education students for the past six years because they have yet to invite Ms. Varnum to give a new information at the public meeting. I'm afraid you won't be able to ban Federal Individuals with Disability Education Act, nor will you be able to recover $5.4 million that has been sanctioned from our special education program. I'm going to say again, $5.4 million that has been sanctioned from our special education program. It seems like the school board is having difficulty managing its own money. The truth is, the majority of the school board is just part of their Christian nationalist playbook. Financial chaos is an effective strategy for dismantling public education. When you willfully fail to discharge your duties, you are harming our children. But put the federal sanctions on the agenda of August 6th school board meeting and have Ms. Varnum tell us if the New Hanover County Schools are under sanction for the seventh consecutive year. And stop suspending our Black special education students at four and a half times the rate of their peers. Four and a half times the rate of their peers. That's blatant act of discrimination. That was it. Thank you for your attention.
On November 1st, 2022, Regulation 4302 on the rules of use of seclusion and restraint on the schools were revised. It includes the following sentence. As of 2023-24 school years, rooms designed specifically for inclusion will no longer be operable for seclusion. Before last school year, children were put in locked, padded closets in this county when they posed a threat for safety of themselves or safety of others. Special ed children in elementary schools were usually the kids in the secluded rooms. During the past five years, there have been over 2,000, yes, 2,000 of our children locked up in these rooms. Last year, per the Regulation 4302, there are no more, no more seclusions. Well, at least that's what the, in the seclusion rooms. So where did we put these special ed kids who posed a threat to safety of themselves or others? And how is this data being reported to the Department of Public Instruction? Not only would the public like to know this, but I'm sure that WHQR, WECT, WWAY back there would like to know. As a parent of two, two former special ed students who have significant behaviors and were never, ever secluded, I greatly would want to know where this is on the agenda for August 6th board meeting. The truth is, keeping citizens informed is one of your duties. Do your jobs. Come on, people! Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Major?
Good evening, everyone. It's been a while since I've been here. I have been busy looking at some things through the state with the Board of Education as it pertains to the state, and you probably have realized that New Hanover County is on the radar. You've made national news. Dr. Faust, I think you've gotten quite a bit of attention. And with that, I'm trying to inform you, which I've done before, that there's evidence and documentation of wrongdoing and possible legal problems. So there are things that have never been addressed that are grievous. So there are things that have never been addressed that are grievances. And for some reason, just on the book one, it ended up on Dr. Faust and Dawn Brinson. I'm sorry, I don't remember her title, which was kind of befuddling because one fifteen C ninety-eight pertains to that being your responsibility, all seven of you on the board. So understand, we are looking at, and those that don't know me, I'm a child advocate, but we're not just for the children. I started to read some of that survey, so thank you for whoever did that. And I thank those parents that have allowed me to understand and see the problems, like IEPs. I've been in two meetings. I've been hearing from not many teachers, unfortunately, and I've been an advocate for teachers in Ohio also. So I am saying to you, what would be presented to you from the people, and I hope anybody joins us. This is the time we come together to get things done. To see them sitting here for how many years now? That's ridiculous and that's unacceptable. So as we look at the laws, violating principles is one of them that we will be looking at that comes through the pike, through the DC education system and all that we are all doing with the people. Our voices will be heard. You will probably start to hear more about common law and we should all know what that is. That's our rights. Our rights.
Ms. Major, your time is up.
Thank you.
Judy Justice.
Good afternoon. Our new school leadership via our state legislature, our county commissioners and our school board are failing our public schools for purely political reasons. All of you collectively are intentionally undermining our public schools so that the public itself believes that our schools are failing. These Republican-controlled bodies are denying resources such as staff, facilities and materials which are needed to effectively run our schools by constantly underfunding our schools. In two thousand and twelve, when the Republicans took control of the North Carolina Legislature, we were twenty-fourth in the nation when it came to per pupil expenditure. Today, we are forty-ninth. Why do the Republicans want our public schools to fail? So that they can take the millions of dollars that go to our public schools and reroute that money to private and charter schools so they and their friends can make a profit off the education of our children. New Hanover County Schools is a perfect example of these political actions undermining our schools. Because of the lack of funding from the state and county, there has been a loss of over sixteen percent of the educational workforce in our schools over the last two years, even though we've only had a three point five reduction of student body. The result is that students' needs are not being met and our staff cannot effectively do their jobs. Worse, though, than the lack of funding is the absolute chaos and fear this school board has created since they took office two years ago when the Republican anti-public school agenda. You have banned books, did away with the needed EDI committee, attacked our LGBTQ plus students in numerous ways, ignored staff's pleas for resources and repeatedly undermined their ability to teach state curriculum through censorship. You all need to stop playing politics with our kids and setting them up to fail in life. And when they fail, they and our society suffers, something that someone who truly cares about our students and our democracy should never want. Stop playing politics with our children's lives.
Helen Johnson.
My name is Helen Johnson. I'm a mother, grandmother, and a great-grandmother. Tonight, I stand for those who are not aware of the damage you are about to do to our future. I speak for the taxpayers who pay their taxes for schools and, excuse me, for schools, not for you to do as you wish, but what is best for all children. Would you deprive your grands of a better education, a good foundation to their future? Are you really looking at the future or looking at the future taxpayers? Or are you looking forward to the prisons being overpopulated? Give my children the same as your doctors and lawyers? Or are you afraid I will surpass you? Take color out of this equation. But also remember, we have low-income whites and other races that are involved in this. I hope one day, the board works for the people, not the dollar. Remember, it's not what you gather, but what you scatter that tells what kind of life you live. And that's by Helen Walton. Do you gather the votes of the rich or do you scatter seeds of equality or prejudice or power? I pray you can rest at night after this decision of no pre-K is made. This affects your educational foundation, my future, and your children, too.
Thank you. David Perry.
I actually changed topics for, I was gonna talk about the need for an audit and making some budgetary priorities, but I just got the, yesterday I received an early version of the staff survey that was just completed by our county, our school district. One of the comments was, "District leadership has created a toxic work environment in New Hanover County schools." And that's just one of hundreds of written responses that we, that we received. I haven't read all of them, it's only been a day. I think it's safe to say that the results are disturbing. Ninety-five percent of the responses are negative. And while there's certainly some criticism of the school board, I would say the lion's share of criticism is directed to Dr. Faust and the central office. Common complaints include teachers and staff feeling disrespected and unheard, a lack of discipline in the schools, rampant favoritism, having their jobs micromanaged from above, and fear of retribution if they speak up. You know, in my software career, I've had bosses like that that kind of have this top-down dictatorial management approach. These leaders don't inspire innovation or creativity. They inspire their employees to stop looking for another job. Employee morale of our, our teachers right now is at an all-time low. Teachers, they're the lifeblood of our school system. We need district policies, but those need to bubble up from the best of our teachers and not be driven from the top on down. We need to replace Dr. Faust today and hire an interim superintendent for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Dr. Faust will probably claim that he can make some adjustments and fix all this, but guess what? There's no fixing one hundred and fifty-seven pages of discontent. I want to tell all the teachers out there that I stand with you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Jermaine Yamun. Jermaine Yamun. Christina Mercier.
At last month's board meeting, the fifth grade chorus from Cottington came to sing the National Anthem. Also at the meeting was a woman holding a sign that said, "Stop school porn." As it turns out, a number of these students started asking their parents what porn is. A parent asked the woman to please put the sign down while the children were present and she refused. She only complied after a woman in her friend group convinced her. This story tells me a few things. One, there's obviously no porn at Cottington since the fifth graders had no clue what the word meant. If it was really there, these rising middle schoolers would have certainly figured it out. And two, those who profess to care about the innocent children don't really, or they wouldn't have chosen performance over compliance. I'm bringing this up now because the board has spent a lot of time in the last eighteen months performing and not performing duties to better serve New Hanover County students. Instead, there are a number of you who have latched onto whatever those who financed your campaign deem important, removing books, gender and genitalia flags, stuff like that. All the while, there have been groups of people who have cautioned you about bigger issues in the schools, safety and staffing being too. Yet I watched last week as a number of you seemed to just realize that the shortfall in the budget was going to mean real people were going to lose their real jobs and then none of y'all wanted to make a decision. It's like you expected the budget fairy to drop millions of dollars to fix the issue and that's absolutely ridiculous. Ask yourselves this, Dr. Faust, too. How many times did you meet with the county commissioners about the budget? Have you taken the time to form working relationships with the commissioners so discussing the budget doesn't elicit hostility? How about the board of the community endowment? Have you asked them what they would be willing to fund? And how about at the state level? Have you advocated for the release of Leandro funding? And if you haven't, why not? So board, I call on you to use the next twelve months to focus on building relationships with those who have the biggest impact on school funding. I call on you to forego the special interest topics that only negatively impact the schools while costing money. Without an adequate budget, our students' staff will be hurt.
Thank you, Ms. Mercier. Your time is up. And that's the truth. Thank you, Ms. Mercier. Time is up. Karen Clark.
What is truth? The word of the Lord from Isaiah. I am Yahweh. I speak the truth and I declare to you what is right. Psalm one nineteen, the sum total of all your words, Lord, adds up to absolute truth and every one of your righteous decrees is everlasting. Jesus, the living word, I am the way, the truth, and the life. If you embrace all that I teach, you prove you are my true followers. For if you embrace the truth, it will release true freedom into your life. I pray the Lord is your best friend and shepherd and that you always have more than enough, that you rest in his luxurious love of peace where he restores and revives your life. May he open before you pathways to his pleasure and lead you in his footsteps of righteousness so you bring honor to his name. When your path takes you through the valley of deep darkness, fear will never conquer you, for the Lord remains close and leads you through. His authority is your strength and your peace. The comfort of his love takes away fear. You will never be lonely, for he is ever near. When your enemies dare to fight, he is your feast. He anoints you with the fragrance of his Holy Spirit until your heart overflows. May you never fear the future, for his goodness and love pursue you all the days of your life. And when your life is through, you will return to his glorious presence forever. Your kingdom come, your will be done, King Jesus.
Chris Sutton.
I am very disappointed in the superintendent and the people he has brought in. I feel blessed to be working with a wonderful principal who values her staff. The district leadership, specifically Dr. Faust, is the reason I am retiring and moving to the private sector. The leadership at my school is transparent and nurturing, not so much at the district level. I have no faith in the superintendent's ability to effectively run things. From his comments, I believe he has little to no respect for us teachers. Faust is going to run this place into the ground. There is no respect for teachers or school staff. Extremely poor leadership over the past several years for both Markley and Faust. Educators are not valued as professionals with degrees in higher education. Our district leaders need to revisit their purpose and the role of education. This district has been nothing but a pain to the entire, the entire time I've worked here. The superintendent should not have gotten any award with the way he has blatantly disrespected teachers in his district. Please get a new superintendent. If I were on this current Board of Education, I would recommend to end all contracts of all superintendents in New Hanover County schools. Our students, teachers, and community deserves better than what is being offered by the current regime. Our superintendent does not seem supportive of teachers at all. It seems like he only cares about his own image. I have worked in this district for twenty-four years and I feel least valued, trusted, and supported this year by our superintendent and instructional leadership than I ever have. Our superintendent seems to show up for the camera but isn't here with us knowing what we face every day in our schools. Our superintendent is, our superintendent is disrespectful and frankly, a joke. No one respects him. Special education is the absolute worst. I gave my notice due to your ineptness. I can't be a part of this hypocrisy. I'm going to become a parent advocate. There's hundreds of these. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Sarah Bailey.
As a recently retired pre-K assistant, I have a question. And the question is why? Why defund the very foundation of a child's education is absolutely wrong? To defund it is wrong, absolutely wrong. Educating our youth should be prioritized and be on the top of your list, not decreased or erased. Give these children the opportunity to learn. You had it and your children, so should they. Head Start and pre-K offer so many benefits to the children, so why would you take it away? They already have enough obstacles in their way, so why add the lack of a solid educational journey? The education of our children, the whole United States rests on the foundation of these young children getting the education that they need. Every position you have is based on the fact that you were taught. Some of you had the opportunity to go to private schools and go to pre-K kindergarten before some of us did. When I went to school, black school had no kindergarten. We started first grade. White schools had kindergarten. Give these children the foundation they need and stop, stop taking away from these children who need this foundation. You've got it. You've got it. Why can't they have it? Why can't they have it? Every lawyer, judge, doctor, nurse had a foundation in education that they received. Give these children the opportunity to reach those heights that they may not be able to reach if you keep taking away from our children.
Charissa Smith. Charissa Smith.
Ms. Chair, can I just clarify something?
Yes, please.
I think the notion is that we defunded it, we lost the grant. That, that's what happened. I think a lot of people don't understand that. I, I'm just saying, we lost the, the Head Start grant. I don't think we wanted it to be defunded. I just want to put that out there because I know we're hearing that and I just want to be clear. If it's not, it should be.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Charissa Smith. I sit on the Board of Education for the Policy Committee with, for the children. My children are a product of pre-K. And I want to bring up the issue of losing the funding from the pre-K enrollment for the children as well. My children attended Johnson Pre-K Elementary School at age of three. They are now four. Without the funding, I was not sure if my children were going to be able to attend school again, and I'm still unsure if they're going to be able to attend. I stand here before you today to ask the question, why are the, is the money not be eligible for my children to go back to school and for other family members and other children who need the funding? I work for the community and I work for the state of North Carolina and I am in the community and I see what not having early childhood does to individuals and people of my peers or what have you as social determinants of health. With children not being able to have funding to start children, to start at an early age is befuddling to me and I don't understand what happened to the, the money. You guys had such a good turnout for the beginning of the year when my children attended. Now it's going to be decreased by nearly half. And my message is for the school system to supplement the funds that are no longer available. We need to serve preschool children. We're not only talking about positions for staff, we're talking about not serving children. Elementary, twelve grade, lost a lot of students to charter schools. However, pre-K has a wait list. So where and why and how can we get the money back for funding? Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Koshaw.
At last month's Board of Education meeting, you voted to ban student art, family photos, and other images from classrooms and school grounds. A few months ago, seven pieces of student art hung in the Board of Education Center. So I scratched my head and wondered, what happened? How ironic that last week I received an email from someone whom I have little in common with. It read, "Congratulations to the art competition winner Morgan Ward, a student at Southview High School in Hope Mills, North Carolina. Every year, I'm reminded of the impressive creativity throughout our district. Please join me in congratulating Morgan on this achievement, thanks to each student who participated in this year's competition." Any guesses who sent that to me? How about if I add, "Morgan's vibrant artwork is a great representation of her talent and will surely catch the eye of every visitor." and will surely catch the eye of every visitor, staffer, and member of Congress as they pass by in the U.S. Capitol every day." Still need a clue? It's from our Republican U.S. Representative, David Rouser. He then adds, "If you would like to visit the U.S. Capitol and see our artwork in person, you can schedule a tour by contacting me." I will forward you this email he sent to his constituents along with a picture of he and Ms. Ward. Attached to the email, I would add your latest policy banning student art and forward it to him. New Hanover County schools are now implementing STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math, as it is more inclusive than STEM, because it allows students who are naturally more gifted in creative subjects to feel valued and let their talents flourish. Here is how Einstein worded it, "Imagination is more important than knowledge. Knowledge is limited, imagination encircles the world." How much imagination are you squelching? Transparency in your resolutions would be helpful because your policy decisions whiplash is giving the rest of us vertigo.
Thank you, your time is up. Lisa Kadal.
Good evening. Our child has attended New Hanover County Schools throughout elementary school, and after watching her struggle in school, we had her evaluated, and she was diagnosed with dyslexia in second grade, which was during COVID. She was placed in an IEP program starting in third grade, and we started to see progress. However, in fourth grade, we noticed that she was continuing to no longer make progress, which we equated to a large amount of students in the IEP program due to COVID and just the number of students in our school, and also special education teacher turnover. We had several teachers that had left, and there was not a lot of consistency in the program those last two years. We had a clinical psychologist that evaluated our child recommend the Hill School back when she was diagnosed in 2021. We toured the school, thought it was a great program, especially since she was able to stay in school with her peers and continue on. However, as two working parents, we could not provide the transportation to and from both schools. We continued to monitor the growth in our school, how it negatively impacted the IEP program for her during fourth and fifth grade. Although we loved our special education teachers we had, we felt there were too many students that all had different disabilities, where they needed extra support and just not enough staff to facilitate all the needs at the school. She made little to no progress in fourth and fifth grade, so we knew we needed to make a change as parents. We made sacrifices on our end as parents so that we could accommodate the transportation needs applied to the Hill School. We were accepted, we were extremely excited about it, and then found out, and excited because this would allow her to receive the support she needs, with teachers that specialize with the experience teaching children with dyslexia and also stay with her friends and peers in the public school system. Then we found out the rules had changed. I'm not sure exactly what happened there.
Thank you, your time is up.
Okay, sorry.
Renaumisho.
I'm so glad to be able to give you some positive news. My grandson, Dixon Jaikle, is one of the students who attend both the Hill School and the New Hanover County Schools. Given his diagnosis of ADHD and dyslexia, the low ratio instruction of the Hill RAP method has been very beneficial in helping him to move forward with excellent growth. Since he does not have an IEP, he receives no additional academic assistance at Porter's Neck. Being a 504 student, the additional instruction at the Hill School gives him the confidence he needs to be a successful student. When he began the combination of the Hill and Porter's Neck in second grade, he was reading at a kindergarten level. At the end of second grade, he scored 2.4 on reading and math, showing a full two-year growth. His BOG III was well below proficiency with a percentile rank of 29%. At the end of third grade, in his BEOG, he scored 3.4 on reading, 4.0 on math, and writing scores as high as fifth grade. Excellent growth is evident in both, with a percentile rank of 72% in reading and 82% in math. His grades in third grade were Social Studies 93, Science 95. The reading and math instruction that he receives at the Hill School serves as a foundation for success in his classes at Porter's Neck. As a retired teacher of New Hanover County Schools, I am an advocate of our public school system, but as my grandson's advocate, I know low ratio instruction at the Hill School provides him with tools to meet his academic and familial challenges. He seamlessly transitions as he arrives at Porter's Neck and loves both schools. For that reason, I really hope you approve the proposed resolution.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica McLaurin Brown.
On April 18, 2023, Love Our Children made a simple request of the Policy Committee, revise short-term suspension policy 4351, and let the parents of five, six, and seven-year-old children participate in a discussion with the principal before a determination is made to suspend their child out of school. 16 months later, you haven't revised policy 4351. Why is that? Is it because the elementary principals oppose calling K-2 parents before they decide to suspend a child? No. Three months ago, you said the principals are already calling parents. Is it because K-2 parents oppose receiving a call from a principal before they decide to suspend a child? No. Not one person has spoken publicly to this school board in opposition to the policy revision during the past 16 months. The truth, maybe, is that the majority of you fear revising short-term suspension policy 4351 and putting it into writing. Principals will call K-2 parents after the investigation is over and before they make a decision to suspend a five, six, or seven-year-old because it will maybe have given Love Our Children a second win? But it is not a win for Love Our Children when the school board votes best practices into policy. It is a win for the school board, our children, our parents, and educators. By not voting best practices into policy, you are harming our children. Stop. Just stop willfully failing to discharge your duties to serve our children. Do your job, revise policy 4351.
Thank you. Barbara Guerra.
If there's one thing that the majority of the school board has been successful at during the past year and a half, it's the dismantling of public education in New Hanover County that disturbs parents and the public. Their policies and budgets are turning our schools into places where parents will not send their children, and educators will not want to work. Christian nationalism is a part of a political movement whose ultimate goal is power. Need evidence? Go back and listen to their comments and on the Battle of the Books competition banning the display of student artwork and the disbanding of the Equity, Diversity, Inclusion Committee. For Love Our Children, it's not what the majority of the board says, but what they don't say. There's been no discussion about the $5.4 million that the federal government has sanctioned against our special education programs over the past six years due to the significant disproportionality of out-of-school suspension for Black special education students. There's been no talk about this past year's implementation of the CPS model. The alternatives being used for seclusion rooms are the 2,667% increase in serious offenses committed by kindergarten, first, and second-grade children. The truth is, some of our board members are willfully failing to discharge their duties, and our children and the public deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Isles.
This budget season has been an absolute disaster. You failed our children and staff. Mr. Wildabore, you failed to secure a simple meeting with the GOP-led commissioners to discuss the needs of our district. How pathetic that members of the same party cannot work together to solve a problem. Two weeks ago, y'all forfeited your option to force a meeting with the commissioners. Then last week, the public had to listen to you whine about how you're going to have to cut staff. Ms. Bradford, you were quoted as saying this was your worst nightmare, a nightmare of your own making. We could have saved staff positions, except the majority was too cowardly to advocate for what we needed. Seems the GOP is not capable of governing, and the only thing y'all are good at is being mad. You spent more time being mad about student artwork being hung in our classrooms than you did collaborating with county to save positions. When you were elected in 2022, our school budget had 3,701 staff. Next year, our budget includes 3,116 staff, a loss of 585 positions, or about 16% in just two years. Meanwhile, our student population has only decreased about 1% in that time. You've gutted our schools, they've become more unsafe, and staff morale has tanked. Just look at the staff survey. And later tonight, we're going to listen to you advocate for a private school versus doing your job to strengthen our own schools. Ms. Bradford, you have not done anything to support UC students who attend New Hanover County Schools full-time. If you believe our district is inferior to this private school, that falls on you for failing to strengthen our schools and ensuring our schools have what they need. Congratulations for successfully fulfilling your agenda to destroy our schools. You'll be remembered as an enemy to our children, our teachers, and our district.
Thank you. Harriet Patricia Madison. Harriet Patricia Madison. Okay. Peter Rowitch.
This evening, there was a presentation on pre-K data, and I hope you'll look at the PowerPoint presentation that's attached to your agenda. The data is impressive. Our youngest learners are thriving. Love Our Children supports the work of the Early Childhood Education Department. We know Head Start and NC Pre-K focus on ways of keeping children in their programs, even when there are challenging behaviors. Last week, we learned that the New Hanover County Schools will not be receiving a Head Start grant for the next five years. That's a loss of about $15 million, which would have funded 15 teachers, 15 teaching assistants, an instructional coach, family specialists, and a social worker. To compound this problem, Title I money was just slashed by over half a million dollars. One of the consequences is there's no funding for snacks for the children. These financial changes are detrimental to our NC Pre-K program and the hundreds of children they serve. After you review this year's pre-K data, decide if it's worth fighting for more funds for our three- and four-year-olds. The truth is, without more money, next year's pre-K data will be disappointing. Make early childhood education a priority. Go back, yes, go back to the county commissioners, ask for more pre-K funding. Next year's three-year-olds will be in second grade in five years. Get them the support that they deserve now.
Thank you, Mr. Rowitch. Loretta Stackhouse.
During the 2022-2023 school year, 38 staff members received training in the Collaborative and Proactive Solution, or the CPS model, for acquiring a more accurate, compassionate understanding of a child's concerning behavior. The training costs $45,000. Love Our Children supports the CPS model as a positive alternative to punitive and exclusionary discipline. So, we want to know, how was the CPS model implemented this past school year? Did any of the schools see improvement in the student behavior? Were there fewer out-of-school and in-school suspensions? It seems the majority of the school board doesn't want the public to find out. Is that because collaborative and proactive solutions doesn't align with your biblical worldview? Clearly, reducing disruptive behavior and the subsequent out-of-school suspensions would make our schools safer for all students and staff. Or are some of you more concerned about your power? Your actions suggest that you believe that honoring the request of Love Our Children will take away some of your power. Love Our Children is only concerned about the welfare of all our children, their families, and staff. The truth is, every school board member should have the same concern. Put PCPS on the agenda for the August 6th school board meeting, please.
Thank you. Valerie Noel.
In 2022, four of you won spots on the school board in a victory that promised to undo the work of, quote, "inferiors governing and making policy that harmed, most importantly, our children," end quote. This is your legacy. I've been a teacher for 23 years. The activities of the Board of Education and the lack of productive, practical decision-making by the district and school leadership drove me out of the profession. Learning is not political. Learning is about being open to ways that are different. There's a witch hunt atmosphere here. I feel threatened and harassed by the actions of the Board of Education. They are unprofessional and too politically driven. The board as a whole spends too much time on trivial matters rather than the truly important things that schools need to be better. Our current board is creating and amending policies to, quote, "fix problems that don't exist." Your policies are the problem. When listening to the Board of Education meetings online, I'm often thinking, how is this important to our students? How is this going to make a better place for our students? Often, I do not see how new policies or even their discussions have any relevance to making this a better environment for learning and student achievement. I feel like our board has been so focused on their own agenda that our students and staff have been pushed to the back. Morale is so low right now. Every time we turn around, they're finding another way to micromanage something, which sends the message to teachers that there's no trust. The school board has created a sense of mistrust, gotcha moments, and animosity for most of the teachers at my school. They're not working for us. It seems that they're working against us. Clearly, teachers by some on the board are viewed with suspicion and downright disgust as if we are the problem, not viewed for what nearly all of us are. Tireless people, beaten down by politicians, undervalued and underpaid, who act with nothing but the best interests of children at heart. That's a real legacy to leave.
Thank you, Ms. Noel. Natasha Tu. Natasha Tu.
Good evening. I believe that everyone's aware that there was a climate survey that came out recently, and it is mind-blowing. Not a lot of great things in there, but a lot to take away. Let me start with some of it that's in there. 60% of those that took the survey do not feel that the district leadership communicates clearly and is consistent with their staff and school administration. 68% don't feel that this district leadership is effective in fostering a positive work environment and culture. 62% believe that our district's educational expenditures are not transparent, which I find very ironic considering the recent budget fiasco. 78%, almost 80%, believe that leadership does not believe that leadership is aware of what is actually going on in the classrooms, and they would like to see more of all of you in there. Why hasn't that happened? I think that would probably go a long way. Let's go ahead with a few more other things. Most of them don't feel supported by the district leadership. They don't feel supported with student discipline. They don't feel valued. That was probably one of the highest ones. Almost 80% don't feel valued. They live in fear of retaliation if they actually raise the issues and concerns with the district policies, procedures, and curriculum. In fact, the input they put in on the In fact, they weren't even, the input they put in on the curriculum that you bought that we've got a contract for for the next four years, that $400,000 a year, they didn't even want. Yet we're stuck with it. And now we're stuck with kids who can't read and can't do math, and we're wondering, what are we going to do to fix it? One of the things that stuck out with me most is one of the comments that was written in there. It was like page 24 of 105 in the climate survey written, written portion. District leadership has sent the message not to suspend students of color. When behaviors are documented in educators' handbook, they are often changed to make the school look better. Are we serious?
Thank you, Ms. Tu.
That's a direct violation of 4303.
Ms. Tu, your time is up. Jan Boswell.
I actually came here tonight to talk about a Johns Hopkins University evaluation on wit and wisdom that states that the biggest problem with this program is that it does not include any phonological instruction of any kind, that it lacks foundational literacy skills, and must be paired with another high-quality program to get the job done, and that teachers struggle to teach some of the aspects of the curriculum. I just read 24 pages of your survey from May 2024 by your teachers, and I think it's more important just to let you know what some of their comments were. They said that wit and wisdom does not provide a well-rounded experience for the students. It contradicts the message that our board is sending out. Some teachers said, "I feel unsure of how to teach." Wit and wisdom is not a good reading program. Our teachers did not want this program. Wit and wisdom is a joke. Wit and wisdom does not meet the needs of our students. It's a complete waste of money. The program is not age-appropriate. There are too many mature themes. Does not help children to read. It's not kid-friendly. These are your teachers, your teacher's statements. Are you listening? Thank you.
Jan Lando.
Thanks for reaching out to the teachers on the climate survey. As a former teacher, I remember getting those surveys and feeling satisfied to know that my needs were important to the administration and the school board. Your response to the survey will be very important. I encourage you to be brave and to be humble, as you take seriously the response you have received from the teachers to the survey. As I read the takeaways at the end, it appears that a majority of our teachers are not feeling included in important decisions, especially with regard to core curriculum. Please, think about what policies you will be putting in place to address this concern. I'm wondering if you also noticed this plea for support with discipline. One comment reflected that there is, and I quote, "a huge lack of accountability when it comes to student behavior, and this is having a severely negative impact on the culture of our schools and the majority of our students," end quote. With 655 comments in response to this questionnaire, I believe, that part of the questionnaire, I believe that this concern needs your focus. There is a lot to take in from the survey, and I hope you will be asking yourselves the following questions. What have I done in the last year to encourage and support teachers? Make a list. What is the administration and central office doing to support teachers? Also, what have I done to build trust with teachers? What have I done as an educational leader in this community? Has my focus on politics and self-preservation got in the right way of my role? Ms. Walker, your legacy to this educational community has been taking the lead in seeing that our teachers are honored, trusted, and respected for this serving.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. I'm going to call the two names of people that did not come the first time. Jermaine Yamun. And Harriet Patricia Madison. Okay. Not seeing those, we are done.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everyone giving us their opinions. They are very valuable to us, and we will be definitely thinking about them and really moving forward on them as much as we possibly can. I do know that we probably need a five-minute break, so I have 6:34. Members, if we could be back on the dais at 6:35, so if we could be back on the dais at 6:41. 6:41. All right, board members, if I could get you to come back, please. Board members, if I could get you to come back, please. We need at least four. Four. There's only five of us. All right. Thank you all for our discussion so far. We are going to carry on with our agenda. We'll give Mr. McManus a second to get back. I did fail to mention we will be having a closed session today. Forgot, failed to mention that before. We're moving on with a consensus, with our consensus items.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to pull one.
Well, would you like to, let me find something to write with again. Would you like to pull? Turn it over.
I would like to pull F, Hometown Ticketing Agreement, so that we can discuss cash.
Okay. Any others? If not, I will make a motion to accept the consensus items except for item F, as provided. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Person second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes 5-0. Ms. Bradford, item F.
If I'm not mistaken, I asked staff when last, did you say, that cash would still be accepted, and I believe the answer was yes, but we've had enough outcry from the public saying, why are you taking away cash from us being able to go to ballgames? So I'd like to address it publicly. So those of you who are concerned about this, please be listening. Who does this go to?
Go ahead, Ms. Varnum.
I think Julie's not here.
No, she'll be here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Because I believe, Mr. Chair, I believe I heard the same thing.
Kelly was here before, wasn't she? All right. Hurry up and wait.
Mr. Chair, I believe, I believe I heard the same thing, that we do still accept cash, so I think it's good to get that out there. Yeah.
Dr. Faust, can you answer that?
We have cash options.
Okay, Dr. Faust is answering. Here comes Ms. Varnum. Ms. Varnum, we just had a question about item F. Is there still a cash acceptable? Accepted.
Ballgame ticketing. Cash. Do we still take cash?
Or Ms. Sutton?
We do still. I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the question. So, yes, we do still accept cash. If students are not, if they come to the gate and they haven't gotten a ticket yet, then we will accept cash at the gate. And Julie, I don't know if you, Ms. Varnum, could you add anything?
Yeah, I want to confirm that our athletic directors are not turning students away. We don't necessarily have the mechanism to allow a cash option for everybody, but if our students come and they only have cash, we're not turning them away.
Go ahead, Ms. Faust.
So, is that just for students? Because I know that there has been some discussion and commentary from the public that said that grandparents or other adults that want to come view games have been turned away. So, can you address that?
Yeah, it has been for students, because I think we've talked about this before. There would need to be a system set up that included staff for collection of cash and then the security for that, for then our financial procedures to be met. So there's a, it's, it's not that there can be a cash box at the gate and then that be done. There are financial procedures that would have to be followed with staff that do that and then the security for that. And I can provide that information again that was provided before.
Ms. Walker? Oh, Ms. Mayor, Ms. Bradford next, I'm sorry.
So we do take cash at the ballgame or we do not? Yes or no question?
So we're not turning students away if they come with cash? I do not believe we are collecting that cash.
And if I'm 78 years old and I show up, what happens?
It's up front.
So there is not a mechanism for collecting cash that has been provided to our schools? So students are not turned away?
Other questions? Ms. Walker?
So, okay, so I'm glad we cleared that, because I feel like at the meeting, I think we thought we were taking cash and we're not. So, I mean, the students aren't turned away. That's great. But I think we had gotten emails about, you know, some maybe elderly folks that were trying to get in there. I don't know how we solved this issue, because I know in the past we have had this come up, and we, I do remember the discussion about, logistically, how we take cash and the security mechanism part of that. Maybe the board needs to kind of think about that and see if we can figure it out.
Ms. Sutton, do you have any recommendations?
I believe when we looked at this before, there was a cost, an additional cost associated with collecting cash at the gate, so we can certainly do that estimate again. We've got the old estimate, but I think we would need to recalculate with new, because I'm sure prices have gone up, and we could bring that back to the board as far as a cost for collecting cash at the gate.
Ms. Mason, then, Ms. Walker?
So my question would be, was this possibility offered to the booster clubs within the schools? And if not, why not?
I'm sorry, I want to make sure I understand the question.
The collecting of cash, was that offered to the booster clubs or?
So they can sell.
So they can sell, but what about tickets?
That's different. That's the difference.
Yes, so.
So I think actually the question that she was asking, so booster, she said was the option offered to booster clubs. This is separate.
So, yeah, boosters are a separate organization from the school district, and so if they were to collect the cash, then we would, in essence, be giving them that revenue, unless they, I guess they could write us a check back, but we would not be able to force them to write a check back to us. We just didn't look at that approach.
I think that's the wrong question. You answered the wrong, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So those are two separate entities. Booster club has usually concession stands, I'm assuming, but she's, they're asking cash at the gate.
We have not explored them collecting cash at the gate.
Ms. Walker?
Okay, that was going to be, I guess, a follow-up question, although we just clarified that that's different. Because I know you brought up costs associated. Perhaps when we talked about it before, I think we were trying to figure out the liability issue on that, maybe, and the security or safety reasons why we don't take cash. So could you, could we still do an analysis of what it would cost, probably maybe a per-hour person or getting the booster club involved with perhaps doing ticket sales? I don't know. Just explore options.
And I think, you know, there might, there would have to definitely be safeguards, no matter who uses it, but if we could have maybe the booster club do it and they get whatever, and then you have two people count it and all that kind of thing. I mean, just, I know there's a lot of protocols that would be needed to be put in place. But, Ms. Sutton, can we, can we work on that for August, please? Thank you very much. Any other discussion on that? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Oh.
Still have to vote on it.
Just for F or the whole consensus?
Yeah, F.
Okay, I move that we accept hometown ticketing agreement as written.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes 5-0. Going on to policy consensus, Ms. Mason. Going on to policy consensus, Ms. Mason.
At the agenda review, there were some changes that had not been made to, that the policy committee had approved. So I would like to pull, prior to voting on all of them, I would like to pull 2230, the universal committee interest form and, sorry, policy, they're all stuck together, 3440. So 2230, the universal committee interest form and 3440.
Okay.
But removing those, I'd like to make a motion to approve the remaining policies under consensus.
Second.
Second, second, any discussion? If not all?
I just say, there's none, are these changes, were they pretty much the school board association had recommended? Or they, these weren't major policy changes, correct?
The vast majority of those, I believe all of those were NCSVA changes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, all in favor of everyone except, all the policies except for 2230 and 3440, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Carries five zero, 2230, Ms. Mason.
So the one that I would like to, that we did vote on at policy was under B seven, I believe. And it says Head Start Board of Directors. And so it would be in parentheses, when applicable, that we need to add. That was already voted on in policy, so that is the change. And I can inform Ms. Kudatsky that that needs to be updated. But I wanted to make sure that we noted it, because one board member had, had reminded me of that. And then for policy.
Let's go ahead and vote on that one. So would you like to make that motion?
I make a motion that we pass 2230 with the changes that I just mentioned.
Where applicable.
Where, when applicable, yes.
When applicable. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes five zero, Ms. Mason.
And really, the only thing for policy 3440 was just a formatting issue online. So just addressing that with Ms. Kudatsky. I make a motion that we pass 3440 with the formatting issues fixed.
Okay, second. Okay, first and second, any discussion? Not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Passes five zero.
Chair, I have one question, please.
Ma'am?
About 30, I know we just passed it, but I think we had another board member that was, was asking the question about the universal application and which one had been updated. Oh, all right, it's at next, okay. Sorry, thank you.
Ms. Mason?
I would like to make a motion to pass the universal committee interest form, but remove the safety committee under board standing committees.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I do. Can the policy committee members explain, well, was it put on there in the policy meeting? And then y'all are just removing it from this version or? Okay, I guess because I haven't been to the policy meetings and I didn't know. I know we are, we have formed the safety committee. Did we decide whether it was ad hoc or whether that was, you know, is it a temporary committee? Or is it a permanent standing committee or no? Oh, oh, it says board standing committee, so it's not.
Yes. So if we go to that policy, that would be under 2230.
2230, okay.
We did add it under.
Work? Okay.
Standing committee.
So it doesn't need to be on the app, basically saying it doesn't need to be there, okay.
Correct.
Because it's just a board, just board members on this committee.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Got you, thank you.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Carries five zero. We are on, I believe, on policies for first reading, Ms. Mason?
Yes, these were put forward by NCSVA to address foreign exchange students and emergency administration of naloxone. And I make a motion that we move these forward for second reading.
Second.
Is there any questions or discussion?
So it's been a long time since I've done first and second reading. Just remind us of how that process, it's just 30 days and we bring it back at the next meeting and vote on it. And I guess so we can hear from folks, okay.
I don't know that we really need, you know, to vote on it, it's just it goes on to the second reading unless we.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's just for information, good. Thank you. Carry on, climate committee.
We got to vote on it, right?
I don't think we do, because we just.
Oh, right, you just said that.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll carry on with climate committee. And that's Ms. Walker, Ms. Walker?
I'm going to probably.
Go for it. No, 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 you, whatever's best for you.
Open it on your computer. You can open it on your computer.
Okay.
Okay, oh, that's loud. Okay, I will say this, first of all, I want to thank all the staff members for participating and speaking your, speaking your voices and taking time to share what you felt with the board. I'm presenting the results of the questions that were posed to staff members from the Board of Education. These are not the board's opinions, I will say that. And to that point, we did ask for honest staff opinions and we did get that. I would say, also, I'm just a messenger here. I am not, you know, like, these aren't mine, so. I'm going to go through these slides pretty quickly, because there are a lot of them, and they're really visual. So there's no way I could go through all the 150 odd pages of comments that we got. There were, so there are two parts to this, there were quantitative parts, the questions that the board asked, and they were ranked and scored, and then the other ones were just the comments. We did a similar climate survey and, two years ago. And so this is kind of like a follow-up on what we did back then as well, done slightly different. And it's only natural for the board to ask questions of opinions of staff, and that's what we're here to do. We even have questions about ourselves, so. Let's see, so I'm going to go ahead and just dive in. Okay, so this is a brief timeline of what the survey went. In April of '24, the board approved a survey. And then between that time, that May, we got, the board members gathered questions together and we, we submitted them for the survey. So the survey was launched between the 14th and the 31st. It was sent out to 46 schools and reminders were sent out four times, weekly, and then Wednesday before it closed and then the final day of its closing. It was facilitated in coordination with the Watson School of Education, and it's rooted in this nerdy stuff here, Bowman Deal's Conceptual Framework of Leadership. And it provided a comprehensive understanding of the district's strengths and weaknesses and enabled, to enable us to target actions that we should be taking, you know, in support of our staff and students. So here is an initial readout of this. We asked classified and certified staff members only. Like I said, it was sent to the school, all the schools. The respondents were 1,988 staff members, and this is a visual here of that. The bulk of them were certified staff members. And I managed to kind of pull up the teacher total. So if you look at the response rate, it's over 87% response rate, which I think is very good for a survey. Okay, and so we did ask also, how many years have you worked with the school district? That's the table, and this is the visual, zero to five are the highest, but, well, highest category. But if you add all the other categories up, we've got some really, we've got some staff members who've been here a very long time, so. That's helpful. And then this, we just asked, how many years have you employed with the school you're currently working at? And this is the visual for that. So, so it looks like, you know, of all the staff members, they, I don't know what this really indicates, I'm just reporting the data. I'm not going to interpret this number. Maybe we can ask further questions about that. Okay, so, like I said, I don't have time to go through every single question. It's public information now, even the raw data, this is the presentation I put together for it. But all of it's public information for people that want to look into it, certainly people already have. So here's the first set of questions. I pulled some things out that kind of stuck out to me. So overall, my district is a good place to work and learn. 44% of the respondents disagreed or strongly disagreed with that. And then, you know, they had folks that did and didn't have, I guess, were neutral on it, and then 24% that did agree or strongly agree. I'm provided with adequate resources to your success. This looks a little mixed, more mixed to me, if I'm just looking at the numbers. And we got some neutral folks in there, too. I feel supported by our district leadership, this really did stand out as well. If you combine strongly disagree and disagree, 66% disagreed. I feel supported by school district with student discipline, and I know we as a board have talked a lot about discipline. I really wanted to get, I think a lot of us wanted to have, have an opinion of what staff members thought about discipline in the district, and they did answer that as well, we'll talk about that further on. I feel valued by the district leadership for my contributions to the success of the district. That, again, is a very large percentage of disagreement. So I'm just breaking the questions up, I'm not going to go through all of them. I'm comfortable raising issues and concerns regarding district policies, procedures and curriculum that are important to me without fear retaliation. This really stuck out for me as well. When you put the numbers together for agree and disagree. There is an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect, that actually is very high as well. I'm asked for my professional opinion when it comes to my professional developmental needs, you know, that's 48. You know, y'all can read that, I think you read it. I am asked for my professional opinion when it comes to student discipline procedures, this stuck out for me as well. Because we are, I mean, I think that's part of our safety committee discussion is discipline. And I'm glad that staff members spoke up. Okay, that's another set of questions. District leadership communicates clearly and consistently with staff and school administrators. That's pretty high as well, 60%. District leadership is effective in fostering a positive work culture for our district. That came out at 68%. District leadership demonstrates a commitment to professional development and growth opportunities for staff. You know, that's a little bit, it looks like a little bit more equal, but still, still strongly in the disagree column. Okay. The district's educational expenditures are transparent. This was interesting for me as well, having just gone through budget. I think it was tricky for me as a board member to understand it all, and that, I think that's what made it a lot harder to vote on the budget this time, at least for me, I'll only say so. I really was hoping for, you know, some answers before I voted. District leadership are aware of what goes on in the classroom. This is probably the highest number that we got. I mean, I think that applied to us as well, board members, so I will just say that. But it's important to note how high this percentage is. Leadership actively seeks and values input from staff at all levels, that's pretty high as well, on the disagree column. District leadership effectively communicates the district's vision, goals and expectations to staff members. A little bit better, but still very strong in the disagree column. Okay, so the main themes that kind of stuck out, I think, of all the comments that we got, out of touch, disconnect, lack of support, lack of respect and not feeling valued. One of the comments were pervasive atmosphere of distrust of professional skills has been here since this, since administration began. And there are several policies from central office that are poor for students and staff. Policy 3400 academic contracts, I don't think we've covered that, but maybe that's something we need to take a look at. And there's positive comment about lead teachers. I think they're very present in schools, instructional practices and make a positive impact with students and staff. I think that's good to note as well. And then this comment, I think it's already been shared, but I'll share it again. I've worked in the district for 20 years and feel the least value trusted and supported this year. So that's all up there for everyone to see. Thanks. Okay, these are the BOE questions, but of course, we put some in there as well. These, like I said, came from the board. The BOE values my expertise as an education professional, that's pretty high on the disagree. They positively impact my work and the climate of my school. 68% disagree with that or strongly disagree. They're in touch with the realities of challenges that teachers in public schools face. That is pretty high, 80%. On the disagree, unstrongly disagree. The BOE works effectively to improve public schools in New Hanover County, that's on the pretty strong disagree as well. We adopt policies that are inclusive of all children, that's on the high, high end as well, disagree. They work to create a positive educational climate, attract and retain teachers, that's also very high on the strongly disagree and disagree. I feel supported with student discipline by the BOE. And again, discipline theme comes up as well, that's pretty high. Like I said, I did not do all of these, we would have been here all day. So anybody that wants to know can obviously look at the data themselves and have a, have a look. But I wanted to do some visual representations. Oh, let me go back. Okay, so the main themes, politics out, attend to major educational issues, support educators, out of touch and include all students. Some of the examples, I think he's already talked about that today, ask teachers, there's so many policies that don't make sense. I think they really, they want us to come into the schools and really see the experiences that they do, and maybe that will help us make decisions better. Another one, often it feels the board is very disconnected from what we actually are going through. They're passing bills saying things they are looking out for, what is best for students, but they don't know anything about the students in 2024. And I wish the board was more functional, listen to teachers more. I mean, a lot of it was communication and listening and really understanding kind of what we're doing as a board. Okay, so this was another question that was asked. The BOE plays a significant role in helping the district achieve its mission, which is to provide a superior education and safe and positive learning environment where students are prepared with the skills to succeed. The answer to that, I did put it in a pie chart just to be different, 53% strongly disagree or disagree with that statement. There was a large, a large number of neutral and/or strongly agree as well. So that's a little bit more split, but it did, you know, err on the 50% side of it. The main theme is about discipline and what the board can do. How can the board support the student discipline? There's a need for consequences to listen to teachers, spend time in schools and create positive, our consistent policies. Currently, your hands are tied by the district, seems to be the feeling of the school level in regard to the lack of consequences for toxic student behaviors. There is not nearly enough staff or time to manage behavior in the way the district expects, and there are no options when it comes to discipline and the intense behavioral needs of students. I think we hear this a lot, I heard this a lot with the task force work. And mind you, we are looking at our high priority schools, and that's why I think I talk a lot about needs, so. Also, we need to regain control of our learning environment, there's nothing inviting about it. First, there's the cell phone issue, I think we're going to get to that eventually with our safety committee. Teachers cannot compete with, with the cell phones, they're also used to setup attacks and, you know, I know that's an issue. I think we've had to deal with some of the video stuff recently as a board. And then there's a mention of the 10-day absence policy, it needs to be for real. I think I've gotten, a lot of the comments, if you read through it, talk about how it's not really enforced the way it should be. I.e. consequences, I know Ms. McManus brings that up a lot. Spend more time in schools and see the student discipline issues that teachers are facing, that's an important point. Create more consistent policies for actually harmful behaviors like smoking and vaping, fighting disruption of classroom spaces. You know, I think this is a common thing we're hearing a lot, that is one of the reasons we did safety committee. And hopefully we'll get to that. So we had a section on curriculum, this, these are ELA curriculum questions. The highest percentage, obviously there are some folks that don't even teach it, so that's where you see the 50% and the above. But if you just look at the other half of it, a majority are wit and wisdom, folks that are, you know, teaching that. And I did put it in a nice pie chart for you. But anyway, you can see the large chunk of the, I guess the comments are going to be related to wit and wisdom. Here are the list of questions, like I said, I did not make a, make a graphic of all of them, but I just touched on some. The curriculum allows for experiential and hands-on learning experiences in a large bulk of the teachers. And be reminded, like, at the very beginning of the slides, we had an over an 87% response rate from teachers. So I just want to keep that in mind, this is not, I don't believe, I don't believe, looking at the data, just a few people that are just mad. I really do believe a lot of people responded to the survey, and so. So, I mean, that gives a little bit more weight to these disagrees and strongly disagrees and, and agrees if there are there. The curriculum is flexible and adaptable to meet the diverse needs of students, there were a lot of comments about that as well. I may have get that later on, but I know at least in the early grades, a lot of people were like, yeah, this doesn't really work in the early grades. But that's, that's not me saying that, that's what other folks are saying, people that actually teach it. Teachers were involved in the selection process for curriculum and their views are represented, respected, I mean. Yeah, there were some comments in there as well about the process, and I know we as a board approved it. I would like to probably look at what that's all about. Okay, so here are the main themes, teacher frustration over curriculum selection process, curriculum appropriateness, teacher autonomy and flexibility. I think I read a few comments about that, the autonomy to kind of teach it the way, adapt it to the. The autonomy to kind of teach it the way, adapt it to the student. Engagement, interest, alignment with standards, implementation and support, and cultural relevance and sensitivity. I've put some of the, some of the other themes down here. Teacher frustration of, you know, they expand upon it, so anybody can read that. It's all online. You know, and here's some more of the themes, the autonomy and flexibility. It goes into expand, you know, what, what the main themes are, people that kind of brought out the discussion on the ELA curriculum. Implementation and support, it's all there. Okay. So we went to the math curriculum as well. It shows here over 50% don't do that, so I'm assuming the other ones are teaching the English. But these are all the programs that are there for math. And you can see it in the pie chart here. A lot of them are Eureka Math. So here's the list of questions, and it was on a scale and all the percentages that go with it. So these are, look a little bit more balanced, I think. Curriculum allows for teacher autonomy. This looked very mixed. You know, obviously, air is a little bit higher on the disagree, but there are a lot of people that were neutral on it, and a lot of people that agreed that it did allow for autonomy. So that's, that's something. Curriculum is flexible and adaptable to meet the diverse needs of students. Again, you know, I imagine because it's math, it's a little bit less, you know, the reading curriculum is different in that way. But I think obviously, too, you're going to have to, teachers will have to adapt to the student, you know, themselves and their kind of level of understanding. Teachers were involved in the selection process for curriculum. This was a lot more mixed as well. But still, still pretty high, a lot of neutrality there. So main themes, alignment with standards, effectiveness and rigor, teacher autonomy, again, that theme comes up, support and training, time constraints, and diverse needs. I think diverse needs come to, you know, if we look down here, if I can see that, hold on, let me see. No, but anyway, a lot of the comments kind of reflect that you have students on different levels of learning, and maybe perhaps that is what the challenge is to teaching this curriculum. Okay, so additional feedback, these themes indicate a need for more teacher involvement in the curriculum decisions, greater flexibility and alignment with state standards, and sufficient professional development and support for effective implementation. And also, teachers highlight the need for better alignment with state standards. I guess I may, did I say that already? Fewer strategies to reduce confusion, more time for small group instruction, and concerns over the curriculum's rigor and relevance. Here's a few of the comments. Eureka Math is not aligned to how our students are tested in North Carolina. I find it to be very frustrating to be forced to teach the curriculum when I know what students need to be successful. But then there's a positive comment as well. I've been impressed with Eureka Math as a curriculum that reflects NC Math standards. The material was written to challenge and engage students at all levels. I guess that kind of explains the divide there. Some say it's too advanced for the low achieving, lower achieving students, even some on and above grade levels struggle. And it's another scripted curriculum, which, you know, that's a theme as well. I didn't put that up there. We are not involved in the process. We're just told what we were, we are using. Teachers need ample time and training to incorporate new curriculums, et cetera, et cetera. And then there's a comment about Desmos. You know, I don't know this curriculum, so I'm just reading what is put up there or what is offered to us. Okay, so I know I'm kind of flying through this, and we have 25 minutes, so I wanted to make sure there was time for a discussion if we wanted to. But key takeaways with leadership that kind of popped out, the disconnect and distrust, the top-down mandates, lack of training and support, leadership issues, and resource mismanagement. So the suggestions, you know, and obviously, these are just broad suggestions. If we have more, we can definitely discuss it. Increased engagement, obviously, empowerment and trust, comprehensive training, transparency in communication, and focus on education, not politics. That was a common theme, too. Key takeaways for the BOE are political influence, strong sentiment that, you know, we're heavily influenced by agendas, which negatively impact educational decisions. They felt there was a lack of support. They felt unsupported by biases of board, particularly regarding student discipline and resource allocation. And of course, they said poor decision-making. We're criticized for decisions that seem out of touch with classroom needs and for not adequately considering teacher feedback. Suggestions, reduce our political agendas, enhance our support, and involve teachers in decision-making. And that is definitely a common thing on both levels of the sections of the survey. For the curriculum, key takeaways, it's scripted curriculum issues. They feel that it limits their ability to tailor instruction to their students' needs and inadequates the resources and support. They complained about a lack of resources for effectively implementing the curriculum. Suggestions would be the flexibility, allow them to be a little more flexible, provide adequate resources, and then get them in the feedback and adjustment process, you know. And I always felt that we should do that. I think it's very smart to assess programs instead of, you know, going all in. Maybe we can do some piloting. So takeaways are lack of effective implementation and disconnect from classroom realities. That's also a common theme. So suggestions would be, obviously, again, training programs, alignment with the classroom needs, and continuous improvement. Establish a feedback loop where teachers can share their experiences, suggest improvements for math curriculum. Okay, so overall, I think, I don't know, I guess this kind of borders on my opinion, but I felt like that it was pretty troubling. The findings with implications for leadership and direction of both the board and district leadership. Takeaways, I will say, include educators' important decisions. And when it comes to curriculum, educators need to be meaningfully included in curriculum decisions instead of just passively. Any changes should be piloted and assessed, and data should be gathered and reviewed from students and teachers, like we all should do, when, to find the effectiveness of the programs. And then make this climate survey a yearly occurrence. I think that's the way we're going to be able to really gauge, you know, how we're doing. Nope, that might be, that might be it. Won't go any further. Okay. So we're back. I know some people touched on this in their call to audience. I don't know if anybody's got any questions. It was pretty self-explanatory, I think.
Well, I'd like to first off, thank you for, you know, kind of leading, leading the charge on this. I think it is very eye-opening, not in a positive way, but in a very eye-opening. But I've had some ideas, I've obviously had some time to reflect on this. One thing I would like to suggestion, this is early for this, but, you know, is maybe taking, we have two town halls left, and we could take one of them and make it an educator-only town hall. I think I mentioned that to a couple of folks. Not the time to discuss that, but that's a thought. And the second thing is, and I'm going to raise my hand and say, one thing that I found very positive in that is the fact that the educators want us in the classrooms. They want us to go out there and see it. And I, when I first got on this board, I did a fairly good job of that, and I have not been doing as good a job. So I'm going to say that I'm going to make sure that I'm in every single school within, you know, within the first, you know, whatever, four or five months of the school year this, this year. I had a former, you know, and I know that's not the end-all, be-all, that's not going to fix everything, but at least we'll be hearing. And I got to tell you, I talked to a very wise person the other day, and they said, you know, listening is great. You know, we hear it called the audience. That's wonderful. But listening and doing are two different things. And so I'm definitely going to be working on both parts of that, listening and doing. So, and I'm just speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the board, but I am going to say that I'm going to do my very best. And I do thank that very wise person who said, you know, listening is good, but doing is even better. So I'm going to be working on that. I've talked to one young lady already about trying to do something that they asked for, so we're going to, I'm going to, I'm going to try my best.
That's awesome. That's great. I know we got some educators here that probably do feel the same way, but yeah. You want to, you got anything to say?
Yeah, anybody?
No, okay. It does, it does kind of speak for itself, honestly. There are a lot of...
Ms. Bradford? One of the things that really surprised me was that teachers had no idea how concerned we are with discipline and safety. It has been, we've been beating that drum as a seven-person board, well, mostly, of the safety, 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 discipline, discipline, and we haven't gotten anywhere. And it's very frustrating to me that it, on our, you know, our hierarchy, it's in the one and two, academics and safety, academics and safety, and yet we haven't gotten anywhere. So we finally had a vote to have a safety committee, and we've broken up into little teams, and now we can actually do something. So for me, the first thing I want to do is get face-to-face with teachers in our teams, and then come back and report. For those who brought up the cell phones, we are working on that. We have been working on it. That's tasked to our team. We've been working on that. You're going to see a presentation next month on that, and hopefully, we will move forward. But that surprised me. I think the trickle-down of information is not as good as it could be. We rarely talk about what we're doing that's good. We're constantly focused on the negative. Again, I brought up curriculum in the budget process, and to see all those comments and to know that we are tied into this curriculum for four more years, and what the teachers said, they don't like it, it's not age-appropriate and so on, there's just, we're going to have to do something. So you're going to see me bring a measure to say, let's form a curriculum committee of board members, because right now, I'm the liaison to the curriculum committee, but I don't do anything. I don't have any voting power. We don't, we meet four times a year. We need a monthly curriculum committee made up of board members who have an action plan, and we get face-to-face with teachers talking about curriculum and see what we can do about what appears to be a big mess to me and a big financial mess on top of that. And those are the things that popped up. Yeah, you know, we got some criticism not too long ago to take our salaries. You have no idea. It's like $6 an hour what we get paid. Take our salaries and our insurance, which we have none, and use that to pay for teachers. So the disconnect between what our job description is here and what we're supposed to be doing, if there are 45, 46 schools, and there's 52 weeks in the year, you're in one school a week and a couple of weeks of vacation. So the, the idea that we can do that is lofty. Again, as Mr. Wildabore said, we started out really good. We're in the classrooms, but then we get bogged down with all of this other things, we'll call it. And so, yeah, we have to recommit to get into the schools and get face-to-face. But we were told on our, what's that word? Where we, we were told when we first got elected, you don't go show up at a school and visit. You have to go through the central office and make an appointment and so on. And now we've learned that that may be the rule, but that's not the way we're going to do it. So we were handicapped in the beginning by rules that we couldn't just go visit. Then we've been told by, by the principals and the assistant principals and the teachers, come and visit anytime. So you'll see, you'll see a change in that. And I really appreciate every single teacher that filled this out. Those of you who didn't, I feel, I feel badly that your voice wasn't heard. This has been the most eye-opening, best thing we've done in a year and a half since I've been on this board, and I'm really pleased that we did it.
Yeah.
Mason, did you want to share anything?
Go ahead, Hugh.
Are you, what are you doing?
Oh, it's Melissa. I'm sorry, I'm looking at him. I don't know why I'm looking at you. I apologize.
I just wanted to say, kind of reiterate what has been said thus far, and just say thank you for, like, putting this in front of us and saying, let's do this again. I think that was a really great idea. Hearing the voices of the teachers was definitely eye-opening. And for me, also, I do go into some schools, but I don't go into all schools. So really, hearing that they want us in there makes me more motivated to set foot in all of them.
Yeah, definitely. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I really appreciate that everyone is saying they want to listen, and they really appreciate the input, and they're taking it to heart. But I must add, the one thing I haven't heard anyone say, so I'll say it for you, is let's take the politics out of what we're doing in the school system. The control of the board, our developing policies, assume you're not having teacher input or principal input, the very thing that jumped off the page about this survey. And so if we do that, maybe we can all come back and start over and do what's best for all of our students and all of our teachers and all of our schools in what politically I was elected for. Let's talk, well, here we go. I couldn't stand it. When we banned books, see, that gave it away. You're not paying attention to the survey. When we banned books, when you tell teachers what they can post in their room or not in the hallways, unless it has something to do with the United States of America or North Carolina, well, how about something to do with all those kids and all their parents? Please absorb what this survey is trying to say to us. But I think your body language is answering the question. I'm sorry, that's my 10 cents worth.
Ms. Bradford?
Can I just, I would like to add a comment at the end. I know I pretend that I've talked a lot, but I would like to say, I'm glad we did this. I think it shows, at least for us as a board, these came from us, these questions, even the Board of Education questions. And I think that this was an opportunity for staff, unlike the last one, for them to actually answer honestly. The thing that stuck out for me also was the fact that they're very concerned of retaliation and the fact that they could answer in an honest ways, they can, in such great numbers. Let's just point out, like, I did the math, I'm not, like, terrific at it, but over 87% of certified teachers answered the survey. That's not one or two people mad about something. That is a collective group of people, and it was pretty strong. So I would just like to say, again, that I appreciate it, and I really hope we as a board absorb this and take action in whatever that looks like. And some of us is going to be, you know, visiting schools more, which I think is very important, because people want, I guess they want to feel like we are listening. But it's not just about listening to them here, it's about actually, you know, being a part of it. We visited in the past, but honestly, like, having time to really absorb what goes on in classrooms and include them. And I don't know, I think what we should do, next steps for this, is really kind of pull some of the themes out and see if we can follow up, because I know we did one two years ago, and it was good to do it. At the same time, I don't think anything was really done with it. So I think, that's just my suggestion. But again, I would, I appreciate the staff, like, taking the chance of giving their opinion and sharing it with us, and I really want us to take this a step further and really do some concrete actions to help staff, because it's clear they're struggling. It's clear they feel the way they feel, and if we don't do anything about it, that's going to be bad. I think people are going to want to leave, and they don't want to stay here, and that's going to be bad for our students. So we're a student-focused group, I hope, and anyway, I won't keep on. But any other questions or concerns? Anybody wants to bring up? Anybody else?
Um, I would just like to say that I would appreciate it if someone would bring me a list of the books that we have banned, because that false narrative out there is very hurtful for the school district. We haven't banned books, and that's a false narrative, and it needs to be corrected. So somebody bring me the list of all the books that we, this board, have banned. I'd like to see it, please. Thank you.
Right now, it's just the one, right? It's just the one that we did this hearing on?
It actually wasn't banned, but, you know...
Okay, so, okay. Well, maybe we can bring that back on the agenda for discussion.
Again, thank you, Ms. Walker. Appreciate that. We will carry on. Excuse me, my voice is starting to go here, but we're going to carry on with our next bit of business, which is policy 7300 and 3200. I'm going to just say on the front end that, you know, I've talked to a lot of folks, I've heard from a lot of folks. I actually talked to the previous, I don't know if she was previous or maybe two times ago, director, art director for the county. She called me up. She's a very good friend of my wife's, and she said, you know, oh my goodness, you guys have gotten rid of art in schools. Why have you done that? And that was a good question. We had a long talk. We talked about the fact, and I mean, I'm not the one that, if it's not clear, that's why I asked. I actually sat down with Ms. Mason, Dr. Faust, and I said, you know, we really need to bring this back on and discuss it again, because we didn't do a very, you know, I'll say, we did not do a very great job making things clear. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mason, let her start, kind of go through the policies, and hopefully, there'll be a lot of clarity brought during this time. brought during this time. Mr. McManus even just mentioned, you know, getting rid of all the art. So we, I think we need that clarity. Ms. Mason?
Thank you. As Mr. Wildebohr just mentioned, I did sit down and have a conversation with Dr. Faust and Mr. Wildebohr regarding this. And so, just to provide more clarity for the district and the community in general, I did a little bit of my own digging on definitions and on what this looks like. And so, as far as displays, the question keeps being asked over and over again, what is a display? What is a display? So, the definition that I found was, multiple times, was a display is a collection of images, objects, or other items that have been arranged for people to look at and engage with. And as it pertains to classrooms, oh, I closed that tab. Well, we'll just keep going. And as, so then we talk about curriculum. Curriculum, as defined, is the expectations for what will be taught and what students will do in a program of study. It includes teacher-made materials, textbooks, and national and state standards. Curriculum is the gathered information that has been considered relevant to a specific topic. Also, another definition is the courses offered by an educational institution. And if you go on to the New Hanover County website, under divisions, instruction and academic accountability, and elementary, secondary education slash course catalog, you can see all of the curriculum that we teach, which includes student art. The reason that we took out that verbiage was because it was superfluous. We had already mentioned it in, it was already in curriculum because we do have art classes. Therefore, it is to be included under curriculum.
Okay, and I will, I'm gonna jump in next. You know, when I looked up the word, and I know a lot of board members looked up the words and stuff, but display is to make a prominent exhibition of something in a place where it can easily be seen. So even talking about, you know, family, I had one wonderful person that was actually up here, just a while ago, came to me and said, does that mean I can't have a picture of my family on my desk? Well, is that, is that, you know, when you walk into a classroom, do you see a small picture or a picture on a desk? I would say, no, that's not something that you would see. So that is not necessarily a display. But I would like to have it clear. And if that means we put words back in to make it clear, let's put the words back in. Let's make it as clear as we possibly can that, you know, you know, art, you know, I was an elementary principal, and art is not just in art class. Art is in kindergarten. Art is in third grade. Art is, you know, art is everywhere. Kids draw. A lot of students represent what they do so much better in the form of art than they do in the form of writing, you know? Some don't. Some do, some do great on both. Think about book reports, you know, what's, what always is on the cover of a book report? Art. Somebody draws something. You know, I think back to kindergarten, not mine, because it was 112 years ago, but I mean, back to the schools where I was principal at. And they had, you know, the whole family thing where the child drew pictures of his, his or her family and all that kind of stuff, their dog. That's all part of curriculum, at least the way I would interpret it. But again, I'm not against putting the word student art back in. If that clears things up, it makes people feel better, it makes it clearer for folks, you know, you know, then let's put it back in. Let's put that in. Let's put family photos back in. I don't think anybody has a problem with, I know, I can't say speak for anybody, but I don't have a personal problem with any, you know, a teacher should have an area that they can look and say, hey, there's my spouse, there's my children, maybe their dog, whatever, you know, I don't think that that's, there's a problem with that. I mean, that's who they are, and that's a good thing. So. Other board members? Ms. Walker?
Well, I was not a board member that was a fan of this amendment to this policy. I would personally like to just see it, take it out. I don't, I don't really know exactly, I mean, I went to the policy committee, I saw all this stuff was added back in. I wasn't happy with the emergency temporary part, only because I didn't feel like it was an emergency. And then, then I wasn't at the meeting, you know, because of my husband. I wasn't at the meeting where everything was removed. So I didn't really get to see the whole process, the time of moving in, moving things out. I notice now there's no art in here. That bothers me greatly. Because if the intention was not to limit art, that's not what's happened. And I think if, you know, if, if it's gonna be strictly enforced, that's a problem. I personally would like to see it just struck it out. I mean, I don't think I'm gonna get the votes for that, but I would like to just have this whole thing removed. I don't see the point. I don't see what it's really, I don't see a problem with people displaying, I just don't see the problem. I guess the problem has not been brought to me of why it's there, why it has to be included. There's speculation that has come to me that it was based on the fact that it was Pride Month coming up. I don't know if that's true. All I know is, I just think when we just over, and we just heard the survey, if we're not getting input, well, the input I actually did get from a lot of teachers was, it was very upsetting to them. And that was across the board, across the political spectrum. A lot of teachers were very upset and confused by it, didn't know what they were supposed to do. And I just think we just should remove it. That's my opinion.
Ms. Walker, Mr. McManus?
Why was the necessary, what was the need for this policy? Can you give me examples of why this policy was even driven?
Mr. McManus, I can. I actually, I can. You and I were on the dais, and I don't want to mention, not the dais, but at a graduation. We both saw one student come up and what he was going to do. And I personally don't think that was an appropriate thing. And I don't want to mention what school it was, but you and I were on that dais. Do you remember that?
Yes, but I worry about the depth and the scope and the width of this policy. It's not just that. I don't see anything that's ancient about administrator of a school's responsibility to dictate what happens, how they handle discipline, how they handle teachers, how they handle parents, their expectations. Again, reflected from the survey. I've visited a lot of schools. But yet, we're sitting on the dais trying to make decisions of what will happen in that school. Every school is an individual community. What we've done is we've totally destroyed our teaching staff for fear of some type of repercussion if they just do something wrong. Why should that even be brought up? Why should we be even talking about this? The principal's responsible for what happens at your school, not us. We don't go into a school, I never have. I don't think anybody has a complaint to Dr. Faust about something about a principal or a teacher. I don't see that as my job. Going to support it, let them know we care about them, that we support them. But these policies are just creating so much negativity. And I noticed when we looked at the survey, I meant to write it down. When you look at, as the years grow in New Hanover County, the percentage of teachers with longevity becomes less and less. That's our message. I don't care who looks at it. That's our message. And we're part of that. We don't need these policies.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I will reiterate what Mr. Wildebohr, Chairman Wildebohr said. You know, that Friday night, I was at a graduation, and I thought, did I miss it? Did I miss it? But at another school, that same Friday night, we had a student attempt to unfurl a flag that could have caused some sort of riot situation.
Fire, please.
And that was the whole point of the policy bringing it in the beginning. But since then, there has been so much, so many people talk about the politics of this. They only talk about the four of us as politics. They don't talk about the other side of the politics. And so much of that has been so voracious. There has been so much pushback on something that should have been pretty simple, pretty easy to understand. It was only a few sentences, and it was to level the playing field in the schools and on the ballfields and everywhere so that everyone's represented. And not one ideology was having a field day and the other ideology was left out. So activism has no place in our schools. And it doesn't make any difference if the activism is your personal activism or your culture or your political ideology. It needs to be left at the schoolhouse door. We're here to teach children how to think, not what to think. And if what you need, if what you need on the wall doesn't do that, then maybe your career path needs to be questioned. If all you care about is the activism of your ideology being displayed on the walls, then there's a problem. And I didn't realize the problem was nearly as big as it is. But the pushback has been severe, that maybe there's more activism going on in the classrooms than we thought there was. Because that wasn't, I mean, nobody went after something like that. But this is pretty basic. You know, we're talking about the American flag. Now, if you're anti-America, you're not gonna want the American flag on the wall. If you're anti-state in North Carolina, you're not gonna want the state of North Carolina flag on the wall. And so on, down the list. You know, the school name and the mascot, post-secondary institutions, school-sponsored events, sponsorships, and the approved curriculum. But if you have to give me the five-page list of things like, well, can we have a plant? Can we have a lapel pin? Then you are either not comprehending the written word, or you're wanting to push your ideology. One of the two. That was the reason for this, and I stick by it. Family pictures? You can have, you can have 20 family pictures on your desk. It's not a display. Well, that might be 20. But if they're all wearing a sweatshirt that has the Nazi symbol on it, then we're probably gonna have a problem.
If I could ask all the sidebar conversations going on right now to please quit. Now, if you'd like to have a sidebar conversation, please go ahead and step outside the door and have that sidebar conversation. Ms. Walker?
So I, I'm only gonna push back a little bit, and I'll, I mean, obviously, I'm gonna try to be as respectful as possible. But originally, when this policy came, it was not, it was not on the agenda. It was, it was given to us as an emergency temporary. But at the same time, I think my question to our former attorney was, did you know about it? I think what bothered me especially was I almost felt like we were hijacked a little bit by this policy discussion. And clearly, other board members knew about it before some did. Some did and some didn't. And our attorney knew about it and I didn't. That was the first thing. And I was trying to understand the whole emergency situation. Now, I think there's a lot of ways that we can view activism. I certainly am not bringing a policy forward to, to make it a bigger thing for certain flags. I'm just letting it be. The activism, in my opinion, is putting policy in that kind of pushes someone else's idea of what activism is. And so, I just feel like the activism, to me, is making, you know, making policy that is trying to stop other folks. The stuff was always displayed. American flags are always displayed. North Carolina is always, it's not as if we weren't doing this already. To assume that we're, we don't love America because we don't support this, I mean, it's already there. I do it, I do that every, every, you know, I did it growing up as a kid. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that has gotta be removed. What I'm suggesting is, why do we have to even have this policy? I don't see the problem with activism. I have not seen it myself. I don't think the board members have been bombarded with emails about it. So I just think to make an action like this, under the guise of it being a temporary emergency thing in the beginning, was kind of, to me, disingenuous. And I kind of felt the timing was weird. But, you know, and I'll, but I'll just go back to the, the pushback that we've been getting and the feedback I've been getting from teachers that have been very concerned about it. And like I said, this is across the spectrum, is the political spectrum. This has not been from just one side or the other. And I don't like to look at it like that. I understand we have to run with a party. But at the same time, when you get elected, you're supposed to serve everyone. So I just feel like that, that's how I feel about it. I would like to see this struck. But if not, I would like to see a motion that at least adds some of these things back in. If that's a compromise we have to make, then let's do that. That's how I feel. Because it's really confusing for staff. And it's really upsetting. So.
So are you making a motion there?
Well, I mean, you had brought forward your idea, because if I make a motion, it'll be to, to get rid of this, this part I. And I don't honestly feel like I have the, you know, I'll make the motion to just eliminate part I of this, this policy here. I just need a second. Oh, well, of the two poli, we already started with this one, correct?
They both have the same verbiage.
Okay, then this one's 7300, part A, I guess part I is, part A, part I. I would like to eliminate that from that. And then the 3200, hold on, I have to open it up. Which would be, oh, thank you. C, wait, I can't see it in C. Which part in C is it? I don't have it in front.
End of C.
Okay.
End of C.
End of C, okay. So I'd like to have those both removed. I just need, I just need a second.
Second. Okay. Further discussion?
You said it all.
All right. You're no further discussion. You know, I think, I'm gonna go back to what I said before. I'm gonna vote on what you said, definitely Ms. Walker. I think, you know, maybe a compromise, putting those words back in there. Because I think, I wanna make it as clear as possible. I do like that idea that you had as far as doing that. But let's go ahead and vote on this first, unless there's other discussion. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the, my pen out here? Would you please call the roll? This is to strike those two paragraphs totally.
Ms. Brackford?
No.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr?
No.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
No.
Okay, that fails. Would you like to make a, another motion, maybe?
No, I think you should make that, since you brought it up.
Okay. And I'll make a motion that we add back in to make it perfectly clear for folks. Student art, it's both of those two sections, student art, international flags, I think was in it originally, and all, military flags, I don't think says it in here, so I wanna put military flags in, and family photos. Is that, is that what?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second, first, first and second. Discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman, the way you have proposed this, you're okay for teachers flying the Israeli flag in their classroom, but not any others. You're okay with them flying, you know, the Russian flag in their classroom, but not any others. When you add international flags, you open it up to the flag of everybody out there that has a state or a country. And you need to think that through of what you're opening that can of worms up to. You open it up to activism for the flag of the country. That's why, that was the intent, to take, make it more neutral and support who we are as Americans. And so, I won't support your additions. I would make a motion to amend that, to take international flags out.
I'll second that.
Okay. So there's second, first and second for the amendment to strike international flags, but leave everything else in. Ms. Walker?
Okay, so, yeah, I have a couple of points. I know, I guess we've got an amendment here now. But like, I do, I mean, this is obviously my opinion, but I do not believe having flags of other nations means you worship those flags of other nations. It's clear that the policy and/or the procedure since I've been a kid is that we, we, you know, we do, we, every time we do the, you know, we do the flag, we do, you know, I don't know why I'm not thinking of what it is, what is it called? Please, thank you very freaking much. Okay, we do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm like, brain, survey brain. We do that anyway. We already do that. That is, just because you have, you know, a flag, I mean, I guess in the policy, it talks about curriculum. Are y'all saying that, you know, I mean, you have a history class, you have, I think somebody brought up STEAM, like, we put art in there as well as it applies to countries, or, you know, we wanna learn about other cultures, like in elementary, and we can't put a flag up. It just does not make any sense that we don't allow that. I don't think what's going on in our district are people putting up Russian flags or Israeli flags everywhere. I just, I don't, for me, I don't see that. I don't see the supposed activism. I just don't see it. And that's why I think even the beginning, I was just concerned that this temporary emergency policy was really over nothing. Because, you know, you know, we might have an incident here or there, but, you know, that's our country. That's America. That's why we have free, I mean, that's why we have free speech. And that is, that is honoring the Constitution. And I think maybe it should be a case-by-case thing if some incident should occur. But to ban international flags does not make sense. This country, I mean, I don't have to, I shouldn't have to say this, but I think most of us are immigrants here. Our family has been in the past. And, you know, I just don't know, I don't, I don't feel like that honors our heritage and our country, that we're just gonna just not even look at flags of other nations. So. But I did want a second part on that, the social media aspect of it. At some point, we need to address that discussion here as well. Because I know, I know a post was taken down not too long ago, and displays was used as a reasoning for that. So we need to cover that at some point.
Okay. Let's go to Ms. Mason.
As you mentioned STEAM, you mentioned other languages, those are part of curriculum. So those would fall under that. If there is a book report about the history of Germany, and there's a flag in the book report, obviously, or in the presentation, obviously, those are part of curriculum. My definition of display does not, separately, my definition of display does not include social media posts. So I don't know why that was the reasoning given.
Brackford?
And I would agree with everything Ms. Mason just said. You know, we, we talk about being proactive and reactive. You know, we, we talk about being proactive and reactive, and it's okay to just wait and be reactive when it suits whatever your side of something you're on. I would prefer to be proactive in this. The world is getting a little bit more dangerous every week. I don't want disagreements in our classroom between our students that come from this country and those who come from that country. I do not want to see that happen and then have to be reactive to it. I want to be proactive to it, so that we don't have a problem on a ball field, we don't have a problem on a bus, and we don't have a problem in the classroom. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McManus, did you have, I'm sorry.
So...
Can I stop just for one second, sir? I'm sorry. Again, we have a lot of folks discussing things out there. Please, if you do want to talk to somebody, please step outside. Mr. McManus, I'm sorry.
So, we're going to cut off TVs? We're not going to allow anybody to express their feelings about, I mean, if I'm Jewish, I can't fly a flag from Israel? Yeah, I mean, I can't, you, you are very outspoken, understandably, about your religion. Can we not talk about religion in a classroom? There are times when all of those things may be appropriate, or they may give someone a chance to vent a little bit. And that's part of what we do at education, is allow kids to learn by discussion, and sometimes to not argue, but make sure that they challenge each other in their beliefs and understanding. As part of the education, folks, we don't have to agree, but we have to provide the opportunity. I, I just, I think aptly, you're slamming the First Amendment, and I hope to God somebody sues you. As I understand, I think somebody is.
That's out of order.
I can't believe it.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, sir. I guess, I guess a follow-up question would be, where does it end? To my colleague's point about it being curriculum, then what is the problem? I mean, you know, I mean, that just assumes that any teacher can make some curriculum up about a flag and display it. So, that just tells me, if it's that easy, why even limit it in the first place? But the secondly, you know, where does it end? And that's what concerns me. This country is, as far as I know, free, and we do have a constitution, and I take it pretty seriously, First Amendment right. That does not mean that we've got to turn around and be horrible about it, but again, I don't see any instance of that happening. And if it is, I mean, prove it to me. I just don't see it. And I'm worried this is a slippery slope, and I don't know where it's going to end. If we keep limiting, limiting, and limiting, before you know it, I mean, we, as a majority, whatever that looks like, and whatever time that is, we're going to be making all these, these rules up, and I just don't know that that's our job to do that, honestly, not this far. I think this takes it a bit far.
And we have a, thank you, Ms. Walker. We have an amendment which would strike the international flags, a second. Ms. Bowie, would you, this is only for that section, the amendment. Please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes?
Ms. Walker?
No.
Mr. Wildbore?
Can you come back to me, please?
Ms. McManus?
No.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
And Ms. Wildbore? Yes. All right, so we have the original motion in front of us with that stricken, that talks about military flags, talks about art, student art, and talks about family. Would you please call it, unless there's other discussion, would you please call the roll? Yes.
Is the board going to decide what the definition is, if they're going to accept for display? Because when we look at the word "display," that's to place or to spread, I'll say something for an item for people to see. So, when we say "display," so when the, if it's on a bus, if it's on a computer screen, it's on a website that's ours, that's a display, according to the definition that I know of, but I need the board to give a definition, so that there's no interpretation about what the, the word "display" means, and where we will find the word "display."
Okay, well, I think we should vote on that. So, I'm going to make a recommendation, and we can discuss it, and if you don't like it, we'll go to a different one. But the, the, the definition that I was, that I found, I think the best one, is make a prominent exhibition of something in a place where it can easily be seen. So, that's, again, we've already, we're already going to add in the family, anyway.
Can you say it again, please?
Make a prominent exhibition of something in a place where it can easily be seen.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Walker?
Is it appropriate to comment now, or are we waiting?
Yes, you can say, go ahead.
Okay. So, I, I do read this, this is in, this looks like it's from the Oxford English Dictionary as a verb, to the point about making it the actual display itself, and, God, I hate that I'm even doing this, but it does bring up electronic device for visual presentation, and to the point that was made earlier about that post that was removed, I don't know why it was removed. I felt like it was an appropriate post, and it is important, if it's, if display is something that is used as a reason to take it down, I think we need to address it again, because, to Dr. Faust's point, and we have, folks have to be clear, I don't like the fact that these art, this artwork was taken down. I picked that artwork last year, and I think they're beautiful, and I don't know why they're taken down. I just, to be correct, we need to, that right there is, is when you display something, you, you're, it's an exhibition, you're exhibiting something, maybe a mask and...
So, so, again, would you, are you offering a second or a better definition, Ms. Walker? And like Sam, mine, mine doesn't have to be that.
Well, all I, all I'm saying is, I think that is the, what I'm looking at on the screen here is a, is a, an Oxford English Dictionary word, what the verb "display" means, to actual, do the display. You know, it's a noun, it's a performance show or event, this is in the same vein, and it's also an electronic device for visual presentation. I just feel like I'm, I don't like the thing at all. So, I mean, I'm probably not being very helpful here, and I apologize. Display, I guess that's the, that's the one we should go with, exhibit, show. But we do need to talk about the, the, maybe we can get advice from our legal counsel, too. Maybe that's, that's where we are here.
Okay. And I think that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Gentlemen?
We're in the same definition as you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Ms. Walker had a definition, can we hear that? Excuse me, Ms. Mason. Vice Chair, Mason.
Whatever.
Pass another definition, I'd like to hear it again, please.
Display is a collection of images, objects, or other items that have been arranged for people to look at and engage with.
The only reason I, you know, it goes back to the family, but we're adding family back in, but, you know, if I have, you know, my whole family sitting here, then that's a collection, and that wouldn't be necessarily something that, you know, if somebody walked in the door, they would, that would be an exhibition, or a display, really, I don't think, or, I don't know.
But if you add family photos back in...
Well, that's what I'm saying. It covers it, yeah, that's true.
Why does it matter if it's a collection of?
Okay. All right. So, which, I mean, which of those two, why don't we vote? So, I'll make a motion that we use, make a prominent exhibition of something in a place where it can be easily seen as a, as a display. Is there a second for that definition?
I'll second it.
Okay. First and second. Any other discussion on that? And if that doesn't pass, we'll go for another one. All in favor, well, let's say, all in favor? Make a prominent exhibition of something in a place where it can eas, it can be easily seen, where it can be easily seen.
Mr. Chair, are we putting this in the def, in the policy itself? Or why are we voting if, I mean?
I think it's just that Dr. Faust would like to have a working definition.
Yes, there's no ambiguity.
Right. Okay. All in favor of that definition, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so that passes three to two. So, carrying on to the original motion, and that is to add back in, student art, family photos, and military flags at this point. All, let's, Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
Could you reread it one more time?
Yes, sir. It's to take the policy as it is now, but to add in military flags, to add in family photos, and to add in student art, so that it's very clear that student art is, and hopefully, will be back up on the walls.
Are we not going to address the social media stuff? Or we, we don't care about that? That's not a display?
Well, I, I think that needs to go back to, to policy for the definition.
Okay, thank you.
That's going to be my, my motion after this. So, okay, Ms. Bowie, so that's just to add in military flags, student art, and...
Family photos.
Family photos, thank you. Back in. Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Okay. Ms. Bradford? We'll skip. Ms. Walker?
Thank you.
Skip. Um, yes.
Mr. Wildbore?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Absolutely.
Ms. Mason?
Put your picture and your family stamp there.
Yes.
And back to Ms. Bradford.
Okay, so that passes five-zero. I would like to make a further motion that we take the public, what would you say? What's the word I want? Social media posts, and bring that back to policy for further discussion. Is there a second? So, we're not doing policy from the dials.
Can you, is there a specific policy that it would be under? Are we going back to this, these two?
I would say these two.
So, you want to send these back to...
Just, just that, for that, for that discussion on social...
Do you want a definition of social media as a display?
Yes. Well, exactly. I'd like to see, Ms. Walker, what, what did you say before about social media?
So, I, I was just bringing up the fact that a post was removed, the pride post was removed, and I don't know why that was removed, and if it is considered a display, that needs to be, that needs to be defined, because I think, to some folks, it does mean a display. And I was not in favor, I didn't know that happened, and I was really kind of upset about it, because I felt like it was disrespectful to put a policy up that was clearly acknowledging our LGBTQ plus folks, and for it to be removed a few hours later was very disturbing to me, based on whatever excuse it was, whether it was display or not, I don't know. But if we're going to be clear about displays, let's go ahead and...
Quiet, please.
Let's go ahead and get that over with, and so it's in policy, and no one has to worry about whether they're violating.
Quiet, please. So, I, we have a motion, but we do not have a second, so it's kind of floundering out here.
Okay.
I made a motion to send it back to policy, to just that section, to have a clear definition of social media posts. Is there a second? No. Okay, then that dies.
Well, the only reason I say, the only reason, I mean, like, and I'm not saying it because I really don't want this to go any further, I don't like this policy anyway, but I just don't think that our staff should be directed to take things down just for any reason, if it's not rooted in policy. And I would rather it not, you know, they're not be directed to do that in the future. So, that's, I'm just stating that out loud.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. We're going to carry on. I do appreciate that very robust discussion on that. LifeVac, that was Ms. Mason. Ms. Mason, please.
This has been brought forward to us by a community member. There has been information shared that we can get these without spending district money, and so I am going to make a motion that we place LifeVac into our, into the new Hanover County Schools.
I'll second it.
Oh, wow. I think McManus got a second. I heard him, he's louder.
Read my mind.
Yeah.
Okay. We got a first, and a second. All right, first and second, discussion on LifeVac. Ms. Walker?
So, oh, and let's, Ms. Mason wants to go first, since she brought the policy. Did you want to go first? Okay. I will say that we've heard a lot about this, and I just feel like if it's no cost to the district, and if it's something we can get trained on, on, online, and I feel like it is, it's going to be beneficial to our district, I'm not sure I have any reasons why not to vote for it. So, I, I guess I just want to put that out there. I guess if we pass this tonight, we're going to have to work out how the implementation works in the future as well. I don't know if we have to do that now, though.
Ms. McManus?
I have to just, Ms. Mason, you make sure everybody understands what that does.
What the device does?
Yeah, what it does. Real simple.
So, LifeVac was brought forward by a citizen to assist with students who may be choking, and we, individuals cannot perform the Heimlich maneuver on them, and so it's a safe way of removing whatever's choking a student, or even an adult, from its location, I guess is the simplified way of explaining it.
Yeah. That's what it is.
All right, we have a motion, and a sec, you...
Sure. It's a no-brainer. I have friends in wheelchairs. It's a no-brainer. I don't know why it's had so much resistance, but I am happy to vote for it tonight.
And I just want to point out, just was reminded that we have about an hour left, and an hour left, so, you know, we're right on time, but we don't have a lot of extra time. That doesn't mean we shouldn't fully discuss this. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor of accepting and moving forward with LifeVac as long as it is free, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Carries five-zero. Carrying on to New Hanover High School. Ms. Walker?
Yes, I wouldn't, I, okay, I wanted to say, I think it is beyond, yes, please come up to the podium, thank you. These are the Advocats, a lot of us have already met with them at Hanover, and they have done a fantastic job talking about the issues at Hanover, and I'll, and I, hopefully, I'll let y'all know, I was part of a, an interview regarding New Hanover High School, talking about my experience at Hanover when I was, went there in the late eighties, early nineties, and how the state, what state it was in then. You know, I found a lot of information from this great group that talked about, you know, we had an assessment done in ninety-nine, I know Eddie's talked about that as well, and we have not paid atten, you know, a question was posed to me in that interview, why do you think New Hanover has not gotten the attention? And I could not answer that. I'm going to be honest with you. I, I think it's a great school, obviously, I'm a little biased. At the same time, I just think we, as a board, are obligated to elevate this conversation, especially, I think, we don't need it sugar-coated anymore, New Hanover needs attention now. And I think we, and we've just had budget discussions, but I'll also say that, you know, even though our county commissioners are not obligated to us operationally, they are for our buildings, and so they need to understand the importance. I know their conversations have been had, but I invited them here tonight to present to us, and we need to have a robust discussion. I will have a motion afterwards, but I would love for them to just go ahead and give a presentation.
Why don't we let them go ahead and speak?
Yeah, that's what I meant, that's what I meant.
Then we'll have questions and answers. Ma'am, ladies, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, thanks to everybody. My name is Allison McCorder, and I'm here with Cassie Rumpel. We co-founded the Advocats last year after spending a lot of volunteer time in New Hanover High School and seeing a lot of the issues that were, that were going on there. We've had the opportunity to meet with most of you, in addition to most of the New Hanover County Commissioners, other government officials, in regards to the educational and athletic facilities at New Hanover High School. Many of you have taken the time to tour the buildings and you've seen firsthand the state of disrepair. If you, anyone driving down Market Street can see the state of the school. And if you haven't been, we would love to have you, you're welcome, but you just need to beware that there are parts of the school that you can't actually go in now because it's too unsafe. Between the talks, tours, and presentations, plausible deniability is no longer an available defense for the unsafe and disparate conditions of the structure at New Hanover High School. As we're all aware, New Hanover is predominantly, is predominantly attended by economically disadvantaged students. The deteriorating infrastructure characterized by significant subsidence, structural concerns, sewer leaks, sagging ceilings, sinking floors, leaking windows and doors, outdated facilities, and inadequate heating and cooling system in parts of the building starkly contrast with the newer and better maintained high schools in the district. Let me be clear, New Hanover has tiles in the bathrooms from nineteen twenty-two, but more importantly, the main building is literally falling down. The local school boards and government's persistent disregard has left the community's once thriving and historical building in an alarming state, despite the stated mission of providing children with an opportunity for a superior education in a safe and positive learning environment. The failure to unite, to unite and allocate funds towards necessary renovations or even updated studies to determine what renovations are needed underscores a glaring neglect and perpetuates systemic inequalities. At this point in action, not only exposes the students to unhealthy and unsafe learning conditions that jeopardize their physical well-being, but also signals a profound indifference for their educational welfare and future opportunities. Parents and teachers have voiced their concerns repeatedly for years, yet our police have fallen on deaf ears and have left students to navigate an unsafe and unhealthy environment every day. Are you waiting for a student to actually be seriously hurt or chronically ill to take action? I brought a brick from the school grounds that I found just laying on the ground. It was the summer, luckily no one got hit by it, but there it was. Given the urgent nature of the repairs being discussed right now, exacerbated by the visible sinking south-facing front of the school, this is the time to reevaluate the entire needs of the campus so that millions in funding aren't being spent to fix something that in fact will be better served being fully renovated. Specifically, this board, this superintendent and assistant superintendents need to ask our county commissioners to provide funding for a comprehensive study of all the buildings and structures that pertain to New Hanover High School. This is the time and place for contemplative, comprehensive planning that leads to intentional, meaningful, and finally implemented change. We have a slideshow that highlights some of the issues that were discovered, have been known for a long time, but were discovered in a study that was done in nineteen ninety-nine. Unfortunately, that study did not lead to action or any kind of meaningful change.
Thank you. If we can just go back a few slides, um, yeah, just, that one, so just, yep, so the school, um, was founded in nineteen twenty-two, at that time is one of the largest in North Carolina. It was, um, an all-white population that attended the school at that time, and that population has changed in the demographics, as you can see in the slide. If you were to combine the minorities, we would be a majority-minority school, New Hanover High School, with almost fifty percent that are on free or reduced lunch. Is there a way that I can change the slides? I'm so sorry.
Yeah, we got, we got a clicker here for you.
That might be a little bit easier for me. Thank you so much. Does that air?
So, over the last few decades, when you got ten of them, some things have been built to the school, this tells you what has been built. Um, the major extensive remodeling that was last done to New Hanover High School was in the two thousands, and that was for mechanical, electrical, and accessibility updates. There is a complaint out there, it is not brought by the advocates. We are here presenting today to ask for change. This complaint also asked for change, I don't know the standing of that, but that might be something that, um, Dr. Bous can speak to, or maybe it can't be spoken about tonight, it doesn't matter, because what we are doing tonight is talking about the current state of the building, and we're asking for your help. So, we have some physical safety concerns, there's a lot going on with the front of the building right now, but did you know that there were eighty-six entry and exit points in the campus? Eighty-six. We also have some issues with the catwalk, with the hallways, with the stairwells, with ceiling tiles, these are some of the current ceiling tiles. Why are they like this? And what's behind them? What's causing this? In nineteen ninety-nine, there was a facility study that was done by New Hanover County Schools, it was paid for by the schools. These are some quotes from that, that finding, from that plan. Conditions are obvious, facilities are in very poor condition, results show that the campus is deficient in almost all aspects. This is twenty-five years ago. This building has significant structural problems, twenty-five years ago. An alarming amount of substance in soils beneath the foundation, twenty-five years ago. The entire south elevation of the building has undergone various degrees of settlement, some severe and unusual. Twenty-five years ago, it would have been fifteen, about fifteen million dollars to rectify these changes, to put them into place, they were not. And now you, the board, is facing millions of dollars addressing just what's going on in the main building on the south-facing part of that building. But the repairs, the needs of New Hanover are extensive, they are not confined to just the front of that main building. Y'all have already known about, well, not known about, but have had to vote on increasing funding for what's going on with the main building because it is not contained to the southwest corner as originally was thought and was hoped for, but it expands the entire facade of that main building. And so now, students are gonna be relocated because fifteen to sixteen classrooms are gonna be closed. What do those classrooms look like? This. The nineteen ninety-nine facilities plan would have addressed that had it been implemented, had those suggested changes been paid for and implemented. It also talks about window air conditioning units. These are our units. It says that they cause mold. Yes, indeed, you can see it's coming down the facade of the building. It talks about windows and doors. Here are some windows, this is the catwalk. Some of the, the windows are permanently closed and some don't open. What happens in rain, which it rains in Wilmington, is that these floors are exceedingly wet, and all of that dampness, that wetness, is brought into the buildings, makes for a very slippery environment. Brogdon Hall, yes, we have a beautiful new gym floor, but the rest of the building, which was built in nineteen fifty-four, has not been renovated. Existing conditions, these stadium seats, they're cool and they're original, they're seventy years old, cool, as is most of the other part of the building. These locker rooms, they're original, from nineteen fifty-four. Original lockers, original flooring. The shower can't even be used because it's one big room with a bunch of showerheads. I'm not even sure that's legal right now in terms of that being the shower in a locker room. Concession stands, we don't have any running water, it's also on the second floor, so there's accessibility issues. This is the front of Brogdon Hall, again, built in nineteen fifty-four, this is our main gym. The ticket office is closed because there's so much water damage. The front doors don't close. This is the current state of this building. The cafeteria is also part of Brogdon Hall, it was completed in nineteen fifty-four, it's basically in the basement. You've got low ceilings, you've got one kitchen sink to service fifteen hundred kids. Because it's so small, we have five lunch periods, and each lunch period is only twenty-two minutes, so if you're over at George West, you have to go over Market, walk down, get your food, and get back to your classroom in twenty-two minutes. I think only students could do that, I'm not sure I could do that. Bathrooms, Allison talked about it, original tile, some from nineteen twenty-two. Our media center, our media center was renovated in nineteen seventy-six. As a point of comparison, Hogard was built in nineteen sixty-eight, and Laney was built in nineteen seventy-six. Both of them received new media centers after ours was renovated. How does that make sense? Thirteenth and Anne, this is our practice field, it's a few blocks from school, and it has a very big significance to the school because it's the only practice field that students can walk to. Otherwise, if they're playing football or baseball or soccer, softball, lacrosse, they are being bussed to games. This is a very important field to the community, the downtown community, but the field lighting is insufficient, the fencing is broken, there's draining issues in the back far corner beside the football fieldhouse, which by the way, that was condemned in two thousand and eight, and it was rebuilt with a, a public-private partnership. Speaking of fieldhouses, when New Hanover was given a track, it was in the late nineteen nineties, they were given a track and field locker room, which formerly was a maintenance shed. This is what was inside that maintenance shed. This was the track and field locker room that was bestowed to New Hanover High School, with the condition that they couldn't move anything. This is what was inside for twenty years. Students stepped over this stuff that belonged to the New Hanover County Schools that nobody did anything about, and students were having to step over, what is that, computer? I mean, is it as old as Brogdon Hall? It might be, maybe not that old, but students were having to, to get around things that were left behind and told, don't touch these. And that remained that way until just last year, when some parents tried to organize this stuff, put it in one room, take away what was clearly trash from what was a maintenance shed given to student athletes at New Hanover High School. I can't get to the next slide, but the next slide is a slide of, um, the half-size track. Here it is, great. The maintenance shed that I was just speaking to is beside the half-size track, and there are some concerns about the half-size track. It limits how many students can practice at one time, you only have three lanes. Most regulation-sized tracks have seven or eight lanes, so you can imagine how many students can be practicing at the same time. We also have smaller straightaways, and then if you're in a relay, you have to turn twice as much because the, the track is half the size. And yet, this track is what has produced one of the fastest kids in New Hanover, not just New Hanover, but in the state of North Carolina. Is he six or seven, what is he in the state? Cash? Second, I'm sorry, second in the state, practicing on a half-size track. I ask you, how many student athletes have missed out on scholarships because they've had to practice on subpar facilities? I probably don't need to tell you that the other three traditional high schools all have full-size tracks. So why are we here before you? We are here because it is the opportune time for this board to do something about New Hanover, as you are spending million-plus on fixing one part of one building. Without this, without you putting together a, a comprehensive facility study of New Hanover, you're going to need to continue to repair, to pay for repairs, to allocate members of your maintenance staff to fix things that are continuing to fall down and break at New Hanover, and it's the same things over and over and over again. That is not fiscal responsibility. At some point, you can't afford to continue to do this. And then you have the issue of overcrowding at other high schools because people go to this high school and they compare what they could, their children can attend at the other high schools, there's no comparison. So you have other, you have the other schools that have overcrowding issues and we have capacity, but when you fix the facilities, you will help fix some of that overcrowding at the other schools as well. So, what are we asking of you today? Technically, we're asking two things, but officially, only one thing. So, we're asking you to fund a facility study, go to the county, because we understand that you need the county to fund your initiatives. So we're asking you to go to the county and ask for funding for a facility study specific to New Hanover High School. And then, put that study into use. Doing, as Chairman Wildebor so aptly said earlier in a meeting, less talking, more doing, and taking that facility study and putting it into play. We don't need another study that we have to refer back to in twenty-five years and think only, if we had only done that, how much less would it have been? So, today, we are asking for, specifically for funding for a facility study, and having just met with the county manager, we understand that there's two ways in which that can happen. You can ask for the remaining capital appropriations fund, you can ask for that, I think it's ten point seven million dollars, some of that's been allocated, maybe all of it's been allocated, but you can ask for a reallocation of some of those funds to fund the study, or you can go to the county with a specific request to fund this specific study for New Hanover High School. And we just, we just really wanna thank each of you for working with us, we know we've asked a lot of you, taken your time, and we're really grateful for having this opportunity to share with you today.
Ms. Bradford, Ms. McManus, and Ms. Walker. I know.
I'm gonna set this aside for a second, and I'm going to make a motion. I move that...
Well, I've, I've got a motion.
I know, but I know what you're gonna do. I move that we instruct the staff to request that New Hanover County Commissioners start the process for the twenty twenty-six bond referendum for New Hanover County Schools. Make the request now, we've all talked about it, we've talked about it for years, we've actually tried to make this request in the past, and it hasn't gone forward, so I move that we do that tonight, and then we deal with the study. But that's a motion on the floor now to request that New Hanover County Commissioners start the bond referendum process for New Hanover High School renovation, repair, remodel, re, 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 whatever, bring it up to current...
Make it safe.
Make it safe for our kids.
Well said. Second.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, I mean...
I'll, I'll second it.
McManus?
I had the, the motion all written out, but we're jumping ahead with the bond discussion, I think this is more important. We're gonna have the bond discussion, and I think this takes precedent, honestly, to get the facility study done.
So, would you like to amend that, that motion?
I mean, I guess so, since, you know, we're all jumping at it. I'm glad we're happy about it, I mean, happy to do it, I'm just, you know, I don't, I, I'm, I, I share frustration with my colleagues because I was disappointed their bond was not discussed, for some reason it was just kind of like conveniently forgotten about, and I don't mean to be rude about that, but I, I, I felt a little disappointed, I'm not gonna lie. But I would also like to get the advice of our operations, um, superintendent here because, um, we've gotten, gotten two options, correct, on either real allocation or whether we should just outright ask for just funding. Mr. Anderson, do you want to know what's the best thing to make the motion for, or do you, I mean, you let us know.
Well, this is, uh, well, I can tell you, there are, there are no remaining funds of capital.
Okay.
They are all allocated to specific projects unless we stop those projects.
Right.
Now, we may come up at the end of, um, end of August, and we, we may have some savings on those projects, but the estimate, um, the estimate for the facility survey is three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that's a big number, and let me tell you why. Uh, I broke it into two parts. Um, you know, before we start anything, we need to know exactly what we're dealing with. I mean, you, you know as well as I do, every time we go out to start a project, it ends up mushrooming. You know, we wanted to replace a sixty thousand dollar gym floor, and three million dollars later, we got our new floor. And, uh, the same thing's happening on the, with the, um, south-facing wall. So, we need to do a comprehensive existing condition survey, and that needs to include some destructive testing, some geotech work, we need to identify the condition of all the equipments and components within that building, um, so that we know exactly what we're dealing with. And the second part of that scope would be to go through a master planning process. I think that process needs to include, um, students, teachers, family... I think that process needs to include students, teachers, family, alumni. You know, New Hanover High School has a very big following. And I know that sounds like a really large group of people, but we did that, you'll recall, with Isaac Baer, and it was very successful. So I think the master plan and the facility condition survey need to be completed first. But we would have to go to the county with a specific request for that.
Board members, just letting you know, we are at the time for this discussion. Not saying we're going to stop the discussion, but we are at 25 minutes right now. So, we have an amendment here. Ms. Walker?
Okay, I'm confused. I know we have an original motion. I have not made an amendment.
She, okay.
Can I just, can I do make an amendment and just say, instead of first coming with the bond discussion, we just, we have that, but first, we come with this discussion with the Commissioners? Because this is an ask, and so I really think that this is important. The bond's important, too. This is more emergent, in my opinion, that we need to get that done. Because conversations have been had already, and the ground is soft for it, I think. And if it's not, it should be.
Okay. So we don't have an amendment? So, Ms. McManus?
I have met with them a few times, with a lot of people. One was a county board member, county commissioner, excuse me, member, who said, "Not doing an election year, not doing an election year." Well, this is now not an election year. So, without throwing them under the bus right now, they said, "Come back." I'm sure Pat will agree. I would amend it to say that we asked to meet with the county Commissioners as a school board for the sole purpose of discussing the certain, whatever you want to call it, the study to see where we are ASAP, and then to start construction. And that they need to start looking at the allocation of the funds or where they're going to get it. Because this is ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. And, Mr. Anderson, if you would, so let's assume we had the survey done, you had the full report, and your estimation, estimation, how long will that take to study? That's my first question. It's a two-part question.
How long would it take to-
If the county Commissioners said, "We fund the survey for the school immediately."
How long would the study take?
How long was that study, how long was it going to take?
I would say probably six months to completion.
Minimum. Six months, okay. Once they approve, how long would it take to, well, they have a big decision what they would do? We're talking, if we started to bar with the study, two to three years before we turned the bridge? Is that a reasonable discussion?
Well, I think the timeline is good. I mean, if we could go ahead and start the study, I would say that, you know, ideally, you want to have this study completed before you finalize projects within the bond. You know, we have currently estimated $90 million for New Hanover, but it is updated estimates based on the best information we have. And this will give us much better information. And it doesn't include 100% of the site either. So if you, you know, no matter what we do, you know, the work is going to have to be phased in. And so, you know, even if we had the work today, it may be a four- or five-year project to complete 100% of the work that's needed at New Hanover.
So, most people won't be around in this educational arena probably in four or five years. Either as a parent or a student. So, back to what you said, if we can amend it, I'd like to meet with the county Commissioners as ASAP to discuss this study as humanly quick as possible.
And I will second that, so we'll go ahead and go with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we split the vote.
Okay.
We can, all right, as long as I can remember, we've been talking about having a bond for New Hanover County, at New Hanover High School, okay? As long as I can remember. If we don't vote on that tonight, we won't ever get the bond. We have to act. What'd you say, Mr. Chair? You said, "Less talking, more action." So let's get something done. Let's vote to ask them to start the process to do the bond. And then the other motion would be to fund this survey. Two separate things, both going at the same time in the same direction, and we will meet at the point where we need to go. Other than that, in five years, you'll still be here talking about this, and the school will have crumbled down around your ears. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair.
So I believe that was to divide the motion, and is there a second?
Can we just remove the amendment and then vote on the bond?
We can do that.
And then make this a completely separate motion?
Do you mind, Ms. McManus?
Because there's more to it than that.
That's fine, but I still will meet with the Commissioners.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We'll add that to the second motion.
We are well past our time now. Ms. Bowie?
Yes. For the bond, typically a bond is a huge project. So you're saying to start the bond without-
Bond discussion. The process.
So the board has to, so, and the other clarification was, I think you were saying the staff does it? The elected official to elected official does it?
The board needs the county Commissioners as possible to discuss funding the study.
That's not a question.
And then funding building, whatever.
That's two different.
Right.
But what I was saying, just for clarity, I was just saying for clarity, so if you do bond, then that's, you're just saying you're going to do a bond.
We're just having this question.
But my question is-
We want to formally request the bond process begin, so we don't get taken by, "Oh, it's too late in the year. We heard that this year, and it was something else the year before, and it was something else the year before." We want to start the process.
So my question is, don't you want to add more into it versus than just a bond?
Let's just make this simple. We need a meeting of the Commissioners to discuss what we're discussing right now ASAP.
Okay.
I, can I-
Go ahead.
Can I make one comment? Okay, I agree with you 100% that we should go to the county Commissioners and request the study be completed as soon as possible at New Hanover High School. Request that funding. And, but, I do think that discussions on a bond need to occur. But the first question the county Commissioners are going to have when you go to them-
How much?
Is what projects are going to be on it, and how much is it going to be? So we, as a school system and the board, need to do a little preparation work before we go to the county Commissioners.
Okay, so we have the bond question in front of us right now. We have a first and a second. Let's vote on that, then we'll vote on Ms. McManus's motion to do the, to step into this. Okay, so we separated the two. All right, Ms. Bowie, so this is, do we want to start a bond conversation? We just heard from our assistant superintendent that it would be better if we started that bond conversation with a plan. Is that correct, is that what I heard?
I would say a boardwork session.
Boardwork session on that.
And then go to the county Commissioners with a formal request.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second in front of us to go forth now with the bond. Though we have heard from our assistant superintendent, it might be better to wait and go ahead and plan that. Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Wildeboer?
Yes.
Ms. McManus?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Okay, so we can start that process. The second motion, Mr. McManus, would you please reiterate your motion one more time?
I mean, I've got it written down.
Okay, Ms. Walker, would you reiterate?
I had it all ready to go, and I'm glad everybody's excited, but it's kind of like, oh, can we just do one thing first and then do the other? But it's whatever.
You're going to lead it, you're going to talk.
I'm going to try, if you shut up. Anyway, because we've got more wording from Mr. Anderson on what it's actually called. If I'm saying it correctly, make a motion to commission a comprehensive condition survey, not using reallocation, but using, just making an ask of the Commissioners that they will fund the $300-plus thousand. I think that's the figure we've got. And also, to Ms. McManus's point, set up a meeting with them to discuss it and the bond. Is that right, Mr. McManus?
And, Ms. Walker, did you second that?
Am I being wordy enough for you?
Ms. Walker, did you second that? Or did you make the motion? Okay, you're second, okay. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Wildeboer?
Yes.
Ms. McManus?
Yes.
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Okay, that pass is 5-0. Thank you, ladies, very much.
Thanks so much.
Again, we are now at, we have about 20 minutes, we have well over that, and we also have a closed session. Just remind everybody, Hill Street Resolution. Hill School. Hill Schools, what's that, yes. Hill School Resolution. Ms. Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass this resolution as written.
I'll second.
There are first and second. Any other discussion? Ms. Walker?
The only thing that I will say is, like I said the last time, I think the letters that we have gotten have explained it a little bit better. The main things I was concerned with are that we're not breaking the law, that we're not losing money as a school district, and that we can work together to do what's best for kids. As long as those things are fine, I will vote for that. And I feel like we got some clarity there a little bit in some of the emails we've received. I just definitely don't want to hurt the district, that's all I'm concerned about, because that's our job, but-
I'm agreeing.
Does anybody want to explain any of that? Are we good with that? Okay.
Anybody from the head?
Ms. Brinson, Ms. Brinson, will you, I didn't realize we still had that on there.
Yes, and just reviewing it, the very last paragraph, it talks about, you know, whereas in consideration of these and other relevant matters, the New Hanover County Board of Education hereby designates participation in programs at the Hill School of Wilmington as lawful excused absences for New Hanover County Schools. That means, in order for them to be absent, they're missing more than 50% of the day. Because in order to count present for the day, a student has to be there for 50% of the day. And that's what we also have to have to get ADM. So if you pass this the way it is, then it's possible that we will not get funding for some of the students here.
That's what I don't want.
Bradford?
I'm confused. Reading the NCDPI Student Attendance and Accountability Manual, page 10 of 86, chapter one, part three, definition of a school, go down to G. To be included in the ADM, a student must have a class schedule that is at least one-half of the school's instructional day. I believe this checks that solves that. Students who have a schedule less than one-half of the instructional day may be assigned as visiting students and will not be included in the ADM. Will not be included in the ADM, but that's not where we are. Because they're talking about three hours a day. That is less than half the school day.
It's actually not. When I had met with the director there, because we had talked about they would need early release in order for them to get to us for the afternoon to be there, at that for the half-day. So we had talked through that when I spoke to the director of the Hill School, because that was a concern. What you were saying as far as the scheduling, that's fine. But if the kid is not going to be, if a student is not going to be at school for a specific class, whether it be language arts, math, social studies, whatever, we don't schedule them for that. Because then we're not teaching it. So we can't put a schedule in for a student that the student is not there for. So if a student is only at our building, you know, for instruction for half the day, their schedule literally is only half a day. We don't provide grades for the classes that we don't teach.
Mr. Chair, is this, is the Hill School mostly for elementary kids or no?
No, they go to middle school, too.
They go to middle school, too? And that's a different schedule than elementary? I mean, right, they got class, different classes, and I mean, elementary is just one class.
Not necessarily.
Unless they go out for-
Your upper elementary, even third grade, sometimes they departmentalize.
I mean, I don't want us to lose money.
Yes, Ms. McManus, do you have something?
But I kind of surprised you. I thought the last meeting we had, we were seated out there, you said you thought we would get it.
No, I was saying that we didn't need this, we were working through it, and I was waiting for us to finish working through. That we don't need a resolution to get to where we were. Ms. Brinson and the Hill School were working to, so what we were saying is that we need them to take the students at the second half of the day. So the first half, they're there so that we get the ADM. I'm not sure if, Ms. Brinson was out, so we hadn't had a conversation to be able to do it. That's what I was talking about at the agenda review last week. But if the board does this and tells us that it doesn't matter, then you are losing ADM, which means that you are not being accounted for for students. So if a student comes for two hours, we still have to provide services for them. We're just not getting the dollar amount from the state for it. It's not that we're in arguments with the Hill School, we're just trying to work it out.
Ms. Brinson, when do you anticipate this being, you know, if we gave you, say, if we delayed this resolution until the agenda meeting?
Yeah, I actually just today sent a form to the attorneys for their review to make comment on. So I adapted what we had before, and I have sent it to them today. And we actually have a call scheduled for Monday afternoon.
Ms. Mason?
I proposed this as a stopgap among, like, as the discussions were occurring, just to ensure that we were covering those students, the very small number of students that it impacts. And so I still stand behind. And if indeed, this is not a permanent resolution, if indeed the board decides to rescind it, we can do that as well.
Ms. Bradford, Ms. Wolf.
And I would reiterate, we're talking about, you know, eight, less than 10 kids, eight children. And we said in our whole budget discussion, you know, we want to make sure our EC teachers, we want to make sure our EC teachers assistants, these are EC kids. And I don't understand why the school district is so against this. And we're getting emails from parents, we're getting emails from the school director, which contradict what you just said. She said in an email to us today that if you put the children in the afternoon session, then they will have reading, writing, and math in the morning at New Hanover Schools, and they will have reading, writing, and math in the afternoon with the Hill School. That is counterproductive to the education process. I don't, I'm really confused why there is so much pushback. We have heard from the state senator in charge of education that it doesn't affect the ADM, and yet you say it does? I don't understand this. We give students the right to go wherever they want, and we lose ADM far more than these numbers. But I don't believe that the ADM is affected here. I don't understand, there's something else going on here. Is it that our schools are just, don't want to let these, I mean, we've gotten a lot of hate mails saying, "Oh, it's just for the privilege." But we have school choice, and if the parents want to send their child to a specialist that will teach them how to read and write and do math, and then send them back into our schools, do we benefit from the graduation rate? We benefit from the testing rate? What is the problem? I don't understand it, and I'm really concerned, and I am in favor of this resolution because there's something here that we are not hearing from you? And I'm not being disrespectful, I'm just flat-out upset that you would try to take this away from the students who want to go there. I know some of these families personally, I know the turnaround Miss Miss You that was here who spoke tonight. Their child was reading at a kindergarten level, and now they're on grade and they're thriving. Why would you try to take that away from them? I don't understand it.
Dr. Faust?
We are by no means trying to take anything away from parents. We're trying to make sure that teachers are able to get paid. If you take 13 kids, so each student has an amount with them. So if there are special needs, they get a dollar amount from the federal, they get a dollar amount from the state. And so if they're not here, we can't bill for any of those. And so then, basically, we have 24,800 kids, and let's say if it's 13 or whatever, how many kids, that's money that's taken away from our ADM, but we still have to teach those kids. That it does, it does.
Why does our state senator just say it doesn't-
You just read it. You have to do half a day in the school, that's what we've talked with them about. We've got to make sure, and that's why we're working with the Hill School, to say, "We need you to take them after these hours," because even if there's a time of day when students are accounted, present for full day or half-day, that has been, that has gone on for, I don't know how many years, that's in the state guidelines. All we're trying to say is that we need them for half the day. And it has to be this part of the day. If they can't do that, of course, if the board decides to go ahead with it, then we just lose the money. And then we will come back and say, "We have X amount of dollars of shortage." That's basically all we're going to say. The reason why there's pushback is we are trying to save the dollar. That is all we're saying.
Other counties are doing it without getting the ADM.
I don't have-
They're doing the half-day. They're doing the half-day. Those students are in their districted stool for half the day, for 50% of the day. That was the conversation when Dr. Faust gave me the directive to meet with them and make this work. And that was his directive, come up with something to make this work, we need to make this happen. That is what he wanted me to do. I went and met with her, we talked about it, and she understands. I even had a conversation with Senator Lee and some attorneys that work for him, and they are on the same page. It is the half-day piece, in order for us to get ADM funded- In order for us to get ADM funding, they have to be, not even, you know, 49.9% of the day, 50% of the day, they have to be in our schools. And that was the conversation I had with her, and she was willing to adjust her times and release to make sure that those kids are doing. So she's willing to work with us. That's not a problem. The only concern that she had was, like you said, the, if a kid has English and math in the morning, and then they're having to get in the afternoon. So her email today was talking about, you know, can they work it out with the principal?
But, you know, if a child's behind, having a double dose isn't a, I mean, I wouldn't think it would be, it would be a bad thing, you know? If my child is two grades behind and they have math twice a day, that's actually a good thing, I would think. Ms. Mason, go ahead.
I'm changing.
Oh. Ms. Walker.
Well, and here's, here's where I am. Now, we've just heard from Ms. Brinson. I have no reason to believe that she would not be telling the exact truth of what she's learned and what she has talked about. I don't, I do not want to disparage a staff member for doing their job and finding out. And I'm reading this email too. Sounds to me like they want to figure it out. And I, and if you've talked to Senator Lee, and he said, in our statute, and you just read it, you have to be there 50% of the day. I don't want our district to lose money. I want, I want to work it out too. So I just, as long as we're not losing money, I just think that, you know, I can't support it if we're going to lose money. And if we have to wait another meeting to talk about it, like, I know it's only eight students, but you think if we make policy for even a few, we've got to do it for everyone. And I just feel like we just need to do it right and abide by the law.
I would ask, why waiting until the agenda meeting is so detrimental?
Are we in school now? We're not in school right now?
I'm sorry?
Are we in school right now?
Year round starts shortly.
Right. Are any kids going, going to the Hill School that are going to year round? Do we know?
I, I don't know. I couldn't tell you.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If, if there are, then maybe we can look at them, but I mean, if they're not, then we can, I mean, we can wait a little bit, just to make sure we do it right. Seriously, we're here for public schools, and we just had a budget meeting, or we don't have enough money. If we lose more money, then that's not a good thing, so.
What, what?
Go ahead, Ms. Mason.
We identified the students, we identified the schools.
The, the director does have that. I've not asked for that information. She just, she told me it's a small number. She'll, I imagine she'll give it to me. I, I do know Porter's Neck was mentioned as one of the schools, but I don't know all the schools.
Start at eight.
Elementary school starts at what time, Dr. Faust?
7:30.
About 7:50.
7:50.
Okay, 7:50, so a half a day of a clock.
Well, you got to be careful because there's certain things that don't count as far as instructional time.
And that's not until the end of August. I'm just saying.
Another tough one. All right. So where are we? We have a motion and a second. That is to accept this and move forward. As Ms. Mason brought up, we could always revoke it if we choose to revoke it. So it's a motion that would be on the table until the board as a whole decides to revoke it. Yes, sir?
So is there anything left for us to look at? And I'm bored.
As long as the attorneys have no concern with the, with the paperwork that the parents have to fill out, that, that is the last piece of it. So as soon as I get a chance to get some input from them, I know they just started, so I emailed to them literally today. So when they get a chance to, to look at that and say it's okay, then it'd be, I'd be emailing it to you guys and, you know, saying, this is the form that's going to be used. We will be communicating this out to, you know, the Hill School as well as our principals. And it would be on our website.
Mr. Chair, what's the motion again? Could you read the motion again, please?
The motion is to accept the resolution as provided. Is that correct?
Can I make an amendment to that and add, as long as they work out the half-day thing? Because I just think that has to be part of this equation. It seems to me that they want to work it out, but I think that has to be a requirement. I mean, it's fair, right? Senator Lee said that is the law as well. So I'm fine with it as long as we work that part out.
Okay, and I will second that amendment. So we vote on the amendment first, then we'll vote on the whole resolution. Ms. Bowie, and, and right after this, just let you know, I'm going to stop and we'll go ahead and make a motion about the time. But Ms. Bowie, please call the roll. This is for the amendment. Men, mint. Speak, Pete.
Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
Ms. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Wolford.
Yes.
Ms. Frank Manis.
Yes.
And Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Okay, that passes 5-0. We go back to the original, now amended motion to accept this paperwork, as Ms. Walker has said, now that as long as we can work out that portion. I'm just going to go ahead and take a shot in the dark. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passes again 5-0. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Ms. Brinson. All right, carrying on. We next have upcoming board meeting dates. If you have your calendars, please. Come on right here.
Mr. Chair, how are we for time?
Am I, oh, thank you. You just reminded me, I just forgot, like, three seconds. I make a motion that we extend our time 45 minutes.
Is that adding in a closed session?
That is adding in a closed, total. Is there a second?
I'll second.
First and second. Any discussion? That would carry us through 9:45. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Okay, we'll carry on at least until 9:45. We are at the pre-K MOU.
So I have for you the pre-K MOU for this upcoming year. It is the same MOU as before with the 12 classrooms from the county. The only difference that you will notice is that we have the carryover in the MOU, which will help to fund the different in cost per salary. So it's the same MOU as before, and I do need for you to approve this MOU so we can start enrolling those students.
Okay. So we have a MOU in front of us. I'll make a motion, we accept the MOU as provided. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Carries 5-0. Upcoming board meetings, which I tried to get to a minute ago, we'll go back to it again.
You skipped my little request for...
I didn't see it in here.
It was in, under new business. We put it into...
It's after.
It's after?
Sorry.
Oh, it's June.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we hold our August Town Hall on Tuesday, August 20th, Wednesday, sorry.
Policies on the 20th.
Policies in case you forget.
Well, it says it's a big day for you guys.
I'm missing, I'm missing.
We can go 13th then. 13th to be safe.
13th.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we hold our first Town Hall on August 20th, August 13th at 5:00 p.m.
And that topic is what?
I'm going to further make a motion that that is a educator-only, educator-only Town Hall. We invite teachers, teacher assistants, front office staff, school-level teacher and teacher assistants.
Second.
For that.
Second.
We have first and second. All in favor, please signify. Any discussion?
Can you just repeat what the date is one more time?
13th.
13th.
On 13th.
Okay.
Okay. What's she got a meeting on that?
5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So it'll be 13th at 5:00 p.m. And again, focusing on hearing from our educators, and as I was reminded, and thank you, everybody's been reminding me all day, that we put their thoughts in, in action. I think our main topics would be definitely discipline. That's a huge one, maybe a secondary one behind that. All in favor of holding the Town Hall on August 20th, August 13th, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Carries 5-0. We also have a hearing that we need to schedule. Is that still correct?
Yes, you have, well, there were 12 scheduled. I do believe I've satisfied three of those since then. So nine appeal hearings that should run about three to four hours in total.
Okay, and it is my understanding that if we divide it into two rooms, it would cut it in half. Is that correct?
You can do panels if you choose. So if you have enough board members to do panels and do those in two separate rooms, I'll just have another, I'll have, have another administrator also be present for my role.
So do you, so these are pan, these are, remind us what these panels are, please.
I'm sorry. I should have started with a more clear beginning. These are your open-choice appeal hearings with regard to denials for open-choice student assignment to schools. And I am looking at the requested schools, and none of them are in year-round or restart calendar, they're all traditional calendar.
Okay. So please look at your schedules, see if there's any dates that are better or worse for you in the next, I'd say, two weeks.
Doesn't that work better if you send us dates?
Well, but then, we did that and, and we didn't get enough to show up, so.
We send nobody respond, you just make a date.
Yep. What, what, how does July 9th look to everybody?
It's my birthday.
It's your birthday? We can also celebrate Ms. Walker's birthday.
I, I mean, y'all can prove it. It's a part of my...
How about July 10th?
July 10th.
A week from tomorrow.
I mean, that works for me, but I mean, he doesn't have his calendars.
We need, we need at least four to say yea.
I have that availability.
Okay. Let's say July, yes.
Ms. Bowie had something to say.
Ma'am?
Excuse me, I believe that is the administrators' retreat.
Oh, can't do that, that makes sense. Yeah, they're going to be kind of busy then, aren't they? Yeah, I'm sorry. That's true. I did not write into my calendar yet. So the 10th will not work, obviously. The administrator, the administrator retreat is the 10th, 9th and 10th, so with the 11th. 11th? Going once, going twice. Let's plan it for 11th. We will plan, you said, how many hours if we just had one panel?
If we have one panel, I think I had the orientation starting at 8:30, and we would conclude before noon. I think I can make that go quicker because I think I've satisfied three of those, I'm waiting to hear back. So if we ran two panels, I think we could do it in, I would say, three hours, and we would, we would come in less than three.
Okay. Let's plan on the, you can't make that.
Maybe we'll be two more.
Okay. On the 11th at 8:30, we will try that. Thank you. Carrying on again, we are now on to our insurance renewal proposal. Ms. Sutton.
So we have uploaded the proposal for the insurance renewal. We were anticipating an increase in insurance, and so as you can see in the document, there is a 3.83% increase. That amounts to about $70,000, $70,728. So we do have that in the budget to be able to fund. I do want to bring your attention to that the commercial liability insurance was not renewed. We were not able to find someone that was able to renew that for us. I will be glad to answer any questions. And we also have our broker, Mr. Zach Wright, here to answer any coverage questions you may have. He'll...
Board members?
I'll ask him to join me at the podium to answer any questions.
Ms. Walker.
So what does that mean exactly, that we could not find commercial umbrella insurance?
Sure. Thank you, board members. That question, we had a million-dollar limit of liability for umbrella. That kind of is what it sounds like. It goes over the general liability, errors and omissions, and auto. And that, this year, we were not able to find a taker for that line of coverage for New Hanover County schools.
So, but what, okay, thank you for that, but what does that mean for us as a district? Like, is it something we have to have? Is it, I mean, obviously, it's good to have insurance, but we don't have it, what are the repercussions of that?
Great question. That is not a requirement to have as an insurance policy. That was an extra buffer, provided an extra million on top of the million-dollar underlying that we currently have.
Okay. And we're not concerned, I assume? So what does that say? I mean, how much did we spend on that last year?
I believe it was $114,000? Yes, $114,000 on page 13.
Okay, thank you.
Bradford.
All right. If we don't have the umbrella, then if we have a claim of maybe a sexual assault in the school, then we don't have that $1 million worth of coverage. Is that correct?
You still have 1 million primary coverage, but this is the 1 million on top of that that would provide a total limit of 2 million.
Okay. On page four, it says to me under sexual misconduct liability. It says limits have been reduced from 1 million to 500,000. Is that true?
That is correct for the sexual abuse misconduct. The umbrella, which we were talking about before, did not, in the past policy year, did not provide sexual abuse or misconduct over the previous million-dollar limit that's outlined on page four.
So the maximum amount would be 500,000 versus the million that we have been the last few years?
That is correct.
Okay, second part. General liability, school leaders, E and O insurance. Page 13, 19% increase in our general liability and a 43% increase in school leaders and E and O insurance. Can you explain why it went up so much?
Yes, ma'am, I will attempt to. We're, the insurance industry, we're in a, I guess, a state of flux right now. Claims are coming in for boards of education, maybe not an overflow, but the value of those claims. And I'll give you an example. In western North Carolina, the last Monday in May, first Monday in June, we had one sexual, potential sexual abuse misconduct claim come forward. We also had a student that was on ROTC camping trip that dove into a lake and died. So we are just seeing extreme amounts of severe seven-figure claims now.
So school leaders and E and O insurance going up 43%? Or do you have that many claims?
We do have those type of claims. Yes, ma'am, we do. Wrongful termination, sexual harassment, more peer versus peer as compared to sexual abuse misconduct, which typically would involve students.
Because I think it's really important that we're losing this critical coverage, and yet our entire amount, our premium comparison, is going up 3, 4% and we're losing coverage. three, four percent, and we're losing coverage. Just want people to understand, this is not a good thing, not at all.
So the total was 250,000?
Yes, sir.
Well, that, Ms. Walker.
Can I just clarify that these are now going forward? All the policies we have in the past still apply depending on the year that a claim is made?
Depending if the claim had already been made in the previous policy year, then the previous limits would apply.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept. I mean, I can see that.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
I did have one more.
Oh, you have more questions, I'm sorry.
I just thought of it.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking. So approval of the, obviously we need to approve this, but, never mind, aye.
I really think the frustration is we don't have a choice. We're, we're being forced to do this.
Maybe that's what it is. I'm pausing because I'm, I think I've just got this, so I, I still want to do the wrong thing. But we, if we don't have a choice, then that's where we are, so, okay, yes.
All right. Anything else? Nope. All right, I'm gonna refresh my page here because I think we have something right below. Thank you very much. Go ahead. All right. Board, professional training, Ms. Bradford.
Okay. I gave you all a handout, I gave you an email. It takes four to think for, I'm a little bit shocked. This is Life Skills USA, one day emergency crash, it was a care course. It was absolutely fabulous. I got certified in infant, child, adult CPR, A, B, and D certification and a T P. I think you should have a copy of those certifications in your stuff. The second one was situational awareness. The other, it's $210. I have a ton of money in my account, it's needed for approval, so I'm ready to be approved of this.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just, I just have one. It's, you know, I think perhaps the pause is because our policy says that we only train with certain. I think we approved one recently, and maybe that's what it is. I guess I'm trying to figure out why. I mean, I totally get the whole CPR thing, I think it's not a terrible thing to do, or I think it's a good skill to have. But are we, when I say moving forward, are we as board members, are we, are we allowed to do any training and then get approval after? Or should we ask first? That's what I'm asking.
Typically, you ask first because especially if it's something that's already approved by our, our policy or by our board, then you don't have to ask. But if it's something that's not, typically the procedure is that you actually bring it to the board and say, hey, I'd like to do X, Y, or Z, and I have the money in my account, can I, you know, and then we just do it.
And that is just for this one training, right? Okay, okay.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, any other discussion?
Motion is to pay out of this year, because we're now in the new...
Yeah, we're in the new year.
Okay, so Ms. Bradford?
Yes, to pay out of this year.
Yes. So can you amend your motion to do that?
My move that we approve this...
This, this current...
Training? To, $210 total, to come out of this year's educational funding from my account. Does that work?
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Mason, would you second?
I'd second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Okay, carrying on, task force committee, update, Ms. Walker.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, I was supposed to do this before. Anyway, I know we had some board members, I think Ms. Krebel was there and Ms. Mason were there at the last meeting, and we had made a decision as a task force to come to the board with a presentation in September formally, so, and for the public to see kind of some of the goals. I can go over some of the things that we, we talked about. I think the last meeting, what we, we are looking to revamp some of our membership, especially as it kind of surrounds some of the goals that we've all kind of come up with over the year. We had a year in review, we talked about some of the things that we had met with, some of the things, some of the meetings we had as far as the roundtables with teachers, principals, and, and parents. We kind of surround, we've kind of focused on a few goals that we had come up with. I'll just read them briefly, seven of them. Every child enters kindergarten at grade level, and really, like I said, we're focusing on the, the high priority schools mostly, but I mean, this encompasses that. Literacy by third grade, invest in chronically low performing schools, create a positive culture in every school, remove language and cultural barriers at school, improve classroom management, and then every graduating senior can access college or trade or certification program. That is basically the goals of the task force going forward. We talked about, like I say, adding members that would probably help with these goals. I already, I forgot to read this first paragraph. We are at the one-year mark, ready to take on new challenges, and the first year, our three subcommittees were leadership, community engagement, and mental health. Mental health subcommittee proposed, set these seven goals that I just kind of came out with. We're looking at, you know, obviously adding people to the task force, that is ongoing, so hopefully when we come to the board with a formal presentation, whatever that looks like, we can talk about that further. That's all I really have for the update. Like I said, we are gonna come to the board with more than that, you know, in the, in September, so.
Anything, any questions, board members?
I would just like to say, I, I was allowed to come one time, and I feel like it's an important aspect of what this board does, and being excluded is, is, is challenging, is extremely challenged.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, we're gonna carry on with, oh, first off, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Walker. Carry on with gifted advisory council, update, committee, can't read, gifted advisory committee, update, Ms. Mason.
I received an email, and I mentioned this at the agenda review, that the gifted advisory council has requested. They have some revisions that they want to make to their bylaws. I did send that to the board members, but I will read what changes they would like because it is not posted, so to be perfectly transparent. The gifted advisory council would like to amend the membership section of the gifted advisory council bylaws to be the following. The membership of the council will be comprised of up to 11 persons. Members shall be approved by the Board of Education and will include three employees representing the teachers and school building administrators of New Hanover County schools, no less than four parents of children in the school system, one New Hanover County AIG program alumni, and not less than two, two community business representatives. Membership shall be representative of the diversity, and in parentheses, gender, race, geography, of the community. A committee composed of one parent, one community representative, and one school system representative will recommend candidates to the full council, who upon concurrence will submit the candidates to the Board of Education for approval. This method will also be used to fill vacancies. Additional representatives may be voted to serve as ex officio members. These individuals may also participate at executive committee meetings and ad hoc committee meetings. Ex officio representatives may be used to fill mid-year vacancies, and so I would like to make a motion to approve those changes to their bylaws.
I'll second that. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Passes 5-0. Now we come to closed session. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to general statute 143.
So moved.
31811 for the following purposes, to consult with the attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the board, and two, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment or of an individual employee to consider for employment in the school system, or to hear and investigate a complaint, charge, grievance, or by or against any individual employee. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, we are in closed session.
We discussed two personnel matters we discussed in closed session. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bradford.
I move to unanimously terminate the superintendent's contract effectively immediately pursuant to paragraph 14 of the superintendent's contract, appointing Dr. Chris Barnes as acting superintendent immediately until such a time as an interim superintendent can be selected by board vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mason?
Without discussion, Ms. Walker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. McManus, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Mason, how do you vote?
Yes.
I also vote yes. That carries five zero. Dr. Barnes, we are naming you as the acting superintendent effective immediately. Do we have any correspondence, board members? Hearing none, two quick announcements. The board will hold an agenda review meeting on Tuesday, July 30th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. The Board of Education Center, the general public will have the option to view remotely on New Hanover County TV YouTube. The August regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 6th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. The Board of Education Center, general public will have the option to view remotely on New Hanover County TV YouTube. Having no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Carries five zero. We are adjourned.